Hello?
I have one right here. Do you want to share? Is it right? On the front.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our November 7th City Council meeting. And we'll start the meeting by taking roll calls. Suzanne?
Thank you. Mayor Meade.
Here.
Mayor Prince and Carr.
Here.
Councilmember Case.
Here.
Councilmember Lalar.
Here.
Councilmember Nakurado. Councilmember Sawyer.
Here.
And Councilmember Sawyer. Thank you.
Thank you Suzanne. If everybody will please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I'm excited to say we selected a new council member last night. For those that weren't here, we had eight outstanding applicants. And all of the council noted how proud we are of our community, those people that came forward with the want and willingness to give back to our community. And so today, honored to name Darwin Nakurado as our new City Council member. And Suzanne will give the oath of office.
Darwin, do you like to join me, Mayor Prince?
I don't know if you want to say a few words. Is there anything? I'll sign it and get it back to you so you have a copy. Thank you, Dar.
Suzanne suggested I might want to say a few words. She's right, very few. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
And welcome Darwin, we appreciate you. Okay, we will move on to Agenda Item Number 3B. And we have a special proclamation tonight. And a welcome to the Stan Dan Williams. Whoever else he wants to bring from American Legion Post 1980.
I see some familiar faces.
Would you like to say a few words first, sir?
We've got a couple of our members here tonight. You know, this is a big weekend, Veterans Day weekend. And between the school events and the things we're going to do right across here. And by the way, everybody's welcome. Sir, this is a big honor. So to the mayor and the mayor pro tem and to ladies and gentlemen of the council, the staff, surrounded by friends and family. I know we're going to get a proclamation tonight, but what I really want to do is set the context for what Neil's about to tell you. So the year is 1918, World War I, the Great War. It was called the Great War because we didn't think we'd have any more. And for those of us in front of you, we know that didn't happen. If you go Google it, you'll find out that the records show that about 16 million people died in that war. It was a time about a year before women even had the right to vote, which means they couldn't work. For the families and the widows of those that we left behind, if we were killed, there were no social security benefits, there were no death benefits, there was no medical benefits associated with the job they couldn't even get. So a group, a small group, small band still in combat next to the Arc de Triomphe in Paris, France, resolved to form something they called the American Legion with a simple mission. They would take care of the widows, the families of the children in those communities that they lived in. And what I'm proud to tell you is 100 years later, we're some of the representatives here in Woodland Park and in Teller County that continue to do that. The other thing I will tell you, if you don't mind me saying it, Mr. Mayor, is that your veterans here in Teller County not only care about you and your families, but we've changed the culture and we changed history this year, July 30th, in Washington, when the president signed into law, unanimously passed legislation from both houses of Congress known as the Legion Act. Which you may not know, he's not here tonight, but if you come to Veterans Day, you'll meet Bob. One of our Vietnam veterans, we talked three, four years ago, I think Chuck is when it started. And it became obvious to us that we were losing our World War II veterans very quickly. Our Korea War vets very quickly. Our Vietnam veterans, and you have some in front of you today, just like my father and others are, nearly 80 years old. And my generation, the Afghan vets and the Iraq vets, still aren't joining. You have to feel it. You have to be fully retired, or you have to be in government, or you have to be in a great place like Woodland Park or Teller County where it's appreciated and welcomed. So there was this big gap called the Cold War. And the Cold War, of course, is the war that would have probably destroyed the planet and never happened. And so those Cold Warriors, some 6 million men and women, weren't allowed to join the Legion. And they weren't allowed to join the Legion, not because we didn't want them, because it was the Congressional Charter from 1919. So I'm proud to tell you that a Vietnam vet from Woodland Park, two miles down the road in the Grange, it's the white building across from the big church, we worked really hard at a resolution, I think, three times, four times, getting it all the way up through the Department of Colorado and having it come down, getting it all the way up. Finally, we got it all up to the national level. And we were told, hey, if we can, this is true, if we can share a little credit, we might get it through Congress. And so we said, the credit's not for us, but we want those 6 million men and women. And so that's now the Legion Act, and that started right here at Woodland Park with your veterans. So truly, these representatives in front of you deserve the credit. So Mr. Mayor, sir, I know you have real business tonight. We will have an opportunity to talk many times over the next few days and all the events for Veterans Day on Monday that I know you'll be at, and many of the folks here, you're warmly welcome. So sir, with that, I turn it over to you, sir.
Well, and I appreciate it, council appreciates it. And rest assured, we have nothing, nothing more important than what we're doing right now.
Absolutely.
And so I will read this proclamation, and then I want to honor the six of you that are here. And you know, we just can't thank you enough. So the city of Woodland Park, this is a proclamation for American Legion Centennial Day. And Larry Ingram, one of the members who's not here today, came to me, I don't know, three or four months ago, and said, what can we do to honor the American Legion that has been in existence for 100 years? And I said, basically, anything you want. And so here we are. And so we thank you very much. And I will read the proclamation, I'll do the best I can. It's always emotional for me to honor and thank you all for all you've done, not just you that are here, but there, I'm sure, are other members that have served our country, certainly on the dais and in the audience. Whereas the city of Woodland Park wishes to call to the attention of our residents and the residents of Teller County, the record of achievements that have been accomplished by the American Legion during the 100 years since its founding, to emphasize the impact the organization has had upon the lives of all of our residents, and its role in protecting the welfare of military veterans, their families, and the communities they live in. Whereas this proclamation recognizes the 100th anniversary of the American Legion, which was founded by, excuse me, which was founded on March 15th, 1919. The First American Legion Caucus was held by World War I veterans and members of the American Expeditionary Force, and was convened in Paris, France, near the Place de la Concorde. Whereas on September 19th, 1919, the United States Congress federally chartered the American Legion as a patriotic veterans organization, which focused on service to veterans, their widows, children and families, and service to their communities. In the 100 years since its creation, the American Legion has evolved from a group of war-weary, World War I veterans, into one of the most influential nonprofit groups in the United States. Today, membership stands at over 2 million people in more than 13,000 posts worldwide. Our post is Post 1980. Whereas American Legion Post 1980 has fulfilled the Legion's mission through family, youth, and community programs, including but not limited to Boys and Girls State, oratorical competition, college scholarships, management and oversight of the Veterans Trust Fund, sponsorship organization, and leaders of numerous annual patriotic events, including Memorial Day, the 9/11 remembrance ceremony, and Veterans Day and participation, all city parades and celebrations. Additionally, the Legion Act, which was signed into law on July 30th, 2019, which will allow an additional 6 million veterans to become eligible to join the Legion, became as a resolution created by our veterans here in Woodland Park at Post 1980. Now therefore, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Woodland Park hereby proclaims this day, November 7th, 2019, as American Legion Centennial Day, in honor of 100 years of service by the American Legion, is represented here by Post 1980. Thank you very much. Now you talk about a small, you can all be seated. You talk about a small token of appreciation, right? There's nothing I can do or anybody in this room, other than what we do to support our American Legion and our veterans. Today, I'd like to, on behalf of our City Council, on behalf of everybody in this room, give these gentlemen a mayor's pin and recognition of their service to our community in the past. And I always say, for everything that they've done, and everything that they continue to do. So thank you all very much. One more time, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Cindy, I'm sorry, I should have started, I should have started with my good friend, Cindy Meyer. Here you go. Okay, we'll move on to Agenda Item 3C, and the Shop Small Proclamation. And Stephanie Alfieri.
Hello, Stephanie Alfieri, 361 West Highway 24. Second night in a row at the podium. I can assure you, I'm not making this a habit. So I am here tonight for the local Main Street, our annual Shop Small Saturday campaign. This is sponsored by American Express Nationwide, and it always falls the weekend after Thanksgiving and the day after Black Friday. As we've done the previous year is when we started this campaign for 2018. There's a number of things we do. We will have a tent set up in Woodland Square. Some people call it Pedestrian Plaza, right there between the old Curves Building and Buck's and Colorado Gear Lab. We'll hand out coffee and treats and bags and some shopping lists that list the specials that the local merchants have. This is in collaboration between Main Street, the Chamber of Commerce. They really step up because they're not typically open on this day during this time of the year. So they actually come in, they man the Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center, and they actually are open for, I believe, four hours that day to greet shoppers and visitors well. And then Colorado Gear Lab is our neighborhood champion for it as well. So we'll begin all of this at 9:00 AM on November 30th, and runs through the afternoon. It's a great time if you haven't come out. It's really cool because we have Rocky and Roll across the street, the music store. So they bring out stereos and they pipe some music down the streets. Last year, we were really lucky, we had good weather, so it was sunshining, it was warm. Everybody enjoyed the atmosphere. So fingers crossed, we'll have the same good weather next year. I believe you also have a copy of the National Main Street. We were actually recognized by the National Main Street Program for our Shop Small Campaign that we did last year. And one of the things we've been focusing on, that I really wanted to point out, was the number two there on the first page, partner with other community organizations for maximum impact. We've found that to really be true. Between us and the Chamber and the Visitor Center working together, we're able to really pool a lot of our resources to make this as successful as possible. So we encourage everyone to come out, enjoy the atmosphere, it's great, certainly get a jump on your Christmas shopping, and support all of your favorite local businesses on that day. And we're here to ask that council support that and support our proclamation to recognize this event.
And we will do that right now. And we appreciate everything that you guys did.
Thank you.
Tell us again, because I remember what a great turnout we had last year. About how many folks did we have?
Well, I want to say, and I wish Gail were here, she really should be up here instead of me, but she's actually away at a manager's summit for Main Street, furthering her knowledge for Main Street. I want to say we had four or five dozen bags. I'm looking at Lori, wondering if she remembers how many people we had come through our tent last year. She's giving me a blank stare.
It doesn't matter, the point is, it was very well attended, almost surprisingly so, and I'm sure we're going to have many, many more this year, so congratulations.
Thank you.
That said, I'll read this proclamation for Small Business Saturday, November 30th, 2019. Whereas the city of Woodland Park, Colorado celebrates its local small businesses and the contributions they make to our community and economy. And whereas the citizens of the Woodland Park area support their local businesses and recognize that such local businesses create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods. And whereas the city of Woodland Park, Colorado, joins with other localities in Colorado and across the nation in recognizing the importance of small business. Now therefore, I kneel by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Woodland Park, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim, November 30th, 2019, as Small Business Saturday. And all residents of the Woodland Park region are encouraged to shop at your local small business in Woodland Park, Colorado, to support small business and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year, dated this 7th day of November, 2019. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Yep.
Go ahead, Paul.
Can you help me out a little bit? I was supposed to bring my note to the back of the wall.
Oh, yes. I believe it's the 12th, 13th, and 14th. So Main Street is going to be hosting a number of homeowner, sorry, I'm in holiday home tour mode. A number of business owner coffees next week in the morning. This is to bring together, we've structured it so that we're bringing together, like businesses, whether it's retail, restaurant, professional services. This is really an opportunity as we move forward in connection with the placemaking, the placemaking grant and all of that that goes into it, to get the business owners' input on a number of things, and in more specifically, the three things that are addressed in there, which is walkability, facade improvements, and signage. Thank you. So, and to really engage the business owners with that. So we've reached out to a number of the business owners in the Main Street District and further, much further out than that. And we'll be meeting with them three consecutive mornings next week to discuss all of those and how we move forward with that, and their input, ideas, and collaboration.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I do deeply appreciate Main Street and all that they do, and reaching out to the businesses and trying to get an understanding. The Christmas Day Parade is going very well, they've sold out their sponsorships, I believe all their burn buckets are gone. I invite everybody to come out and enjoy the festivities this holiday. And please support you Main Street. Great group of volunteers. Thank you so much.
Thank you, it looked like we had at least 150 visitors last year. And so, like we said, there'll be many, many more this year, and we'll look forward to seeing everybody in this room on November 30th. So thanks very much, and Stephanie, thanks again.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry. Anything else, Paul?
No, no, thank you, thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to Agenda Item 3D, and Keep Woodland Park Beautiful Annual Presentation. And here comes Pat Hislop.
Councilmembers, mayor, city manager, and city staff, I am Pat Hislop, 540 Sunny Green Court, Woodland Park, Colorado, and I am here as your representative for Keep Woodland Park Beautiful to present your 2019 Annual Review, or our 2019 Annual Review. First of all, I'd like to remind you that Keep Woodland Park Beautiful presented the council with the Keep American Beautiful President Circle Recognition and Affiliate Good Standing Award for excellence achieved in 2018. Keep Woodland Park Beautiful met eight times last year, we lost five members and gained four members. And we're looking for seven more. Last year, our costs were $55 for our Keep America Beautiful annual fee, $141, $141 for t-shirts and gifts, we got to use this lovely space for our meetings. Our 2019 approved budget was $1,800. All right. First of all, we do outreach and awareness. We do maintain a Facebook and website presence. We also recognize businesses and residents for being beautiful. Last year, we did recognize in April, the Cottage Creek Living LLC, because they revitalized an older neighborhood with an infill single-family residence that are just beautiful. The cost, $20 for a website. Adopt a garden and adopt a spot. We added two new gardens this year, one in front of the Woodland Professional Building and one in front of the Utah Cultural Center. And that brings us to nine gardens. We also have 15 adopt a spots, oops, I forgot to click. 15 adopt a spots, those where volunteers help keep the area clean and tidy with our support. The costs last year were $900 for two adopt a garden plaques on the boulders. Next, we have our annual cleanup. That was June 8th, it was our 17th, and it was our best yet. We had 167 participants, picked up 116 bags of garbage, covering 13 miles of road, including three on Highway 24 and one on 67. We did that, spending $95 for food. We had a lot of support and gifts. We had trash bags and water from Keep America Beautiful. We had a dumpster from Teller Waste. We had food donated by Starbucks, Safeway, and Sam's Club. Next, we have our fixer residents. This is something new that we started last year. We helped out a senior residence with painting and yard work. We helped out a business, the Woodland Park Senior Center, with yard work, with a lot of help from Victory Life Church. The cost there was $248 for paint and supplies, and in gifts was discounts from Sherman Williams. We also managed to finish our painting project at the pedestrian underpass on 24. We painted the rails to cover up the rust and peeling paint, and we thanked Darren for helping us finish that, our city manager. That was all done with gifts from, paint supplies, paint and supplies from Sherman Williams and the city. Collaborations, we are working with the, oh no, I just lost it. The placemaking partners. We helped the Main Street with the mini cleanup in downtown in May. We also support the Gold Meadow Dog Park by helping to maintain and monitor the cleanliness. We are also now supporting Focus on the Forest. They are working on getting a maintained recycling facility here. And one of the first steps for them is they are conducting a recycling survey. So I'm pleased, I'm inviting everyone to fill out this survey, there's copies on the back table there. There's a QR code on the survey that you can easily access with your smartphone, and you can find it on their website, Focus on the Forest, and it should hopefully soon be on the city website as well. This survey is to help them better meet the needs of our community and to help them with their grant writing process. So.
Did I already cover it?
I did, okay. So, I see I'm already done. 2020 recommendations, that we will continue to maintain our existing programs. We will constantly search for new projects to end littering, improve recycling, and beautify the community. We are asking for our budget this year, 2020, $1,930. Thank you, any questions?
Thank you. Very good job.
Was that short and sweet? Heard you had a lot on the agenda.
Our council liaison will say a few words. Thank you very much, Pat. You rushed through it, you didn't need to rush through it. You did wonderful, you projected very well, you should
You did wonderful, you project very well, you sing opera. I appreciate you, all you do, your enthusiasm, the group, you know, it's a pretty easy volunteer job. We theoretically pick up trash, you know, how volatile is that? So we have some fun, we try to really be a positive force in the community, and this committee has a bunch of wonderful volunteers, and we're working to get more volunteers, not just to pick up trash, but to help us with our plans and ideas. We're always looking for new ideas. You think picking up trash, well, how many more new ideas do we need? But there's all these other things, like the fixer residents thing. We have, we're going to enlist community members, community organizations, to help us with these plans, but this board is looking for input and volunteerism. As we said, we have seven openings right now. They put out a wonderful newsletter, which is available on the website. We're migrating most of Keep Woodland Park Beautiful, planning to migrate it to the city website, along with a bunch of other things on the city website. It's really going to be top-notch, and I would welcome you to read the newsletter that's out there. There's a lot of good information and a lot of fun things going on in town. But thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Pat, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Everyone's smiling like you are when they're picking up trash?
Of course we are, right? The sunshine and the beautiful mountain town.
All right. Okay, we'll move forward, Agenda Item Number 3E, and the Nonprofit Cooperative Fundraiser, and here's Gail Gross. Welcome, Gail.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm a little nervous. I don't know why. Maybe because I was here last night. I do want to congratulate you, Darwin. It was, it's an honor to be here again, city council, staff, community members, and I'm really thankful that some of the supporters with the nonprofits are also here to support this little discussion. I'm going to tell you about the co-op, and then I'm also going to tell you about a fundraiser that's coming up. And I did hand out some information to you that I'll kind of squeeze in here and there. But the Nonprofit Cooperative actually is a group of nonprofits that get together, and they do that because they want to work together, go through trainings, learn about different things together. They want to share resources, and they also want to collaborate on opportunities. Now, this is something that I had heard a lot about when I came back in April of 2018. Nonprofits that I was meeting with, I am a consultant for nonprofits, but when I was meeting with nonprofits up here, they're like, "We just want to work together." You know, "How can we do that?" Well, for a nonprofit to take on that responsibility, they already have their own mission. So because I am an avid volunteer, okay, I've been doing that since 1999 here in Teller County, and I was coming back, and I'm a professional fundraiser, and I'm a nonprofit fanatic. I love them, I love the work they do. I said, "I'll do it. I'll just start bringing nonprofits together and see if we can coordinate something." So what has happened in the last 18 months ago, in May 2018, was when I first started talking to nonprofits about this. 13 months ago, in October, I had mentioned something to Neil Levy, and Neil said, "You know what? Why don't we host that first meeting at the Swiss Chalet, and we'll see what happens? We'll see if people really want to get together." So we did that. Forty-five percent of the people that were invited attended. Seventy percent of the people that were invited said were interested. 13 months ago, that was October 2018, then 10 months ago, because that group kept meeting, and we started doing it closer together, like maybe three weeks apart, well, then in January of 2019, the group decided, "You know what? Let's start this as a real organized group," and it became the Nonprofit Cooperative. That cooperative has been meeting monthly now. Every month, there's a training. The nonprofits that participate can actually be trainers, and when they do that, they actually earn the money for the meeting, and I'll explain that a little bit. But then four months ago, it progressed even further, and we started talking about collaborating on fundraising. And this came up because of, you know, there's some things that happen within the city where there's money that goes out to nonprofits, and there's spaces that get used by nonprofits. Well, it's easier if, potentially, if nonprofits are working together to make those resources spread. So that's where the discussion started, and I will describe a little bit more about that as this presentation goes on. So the 25 nonprofits that are part of the cooperative are listed there on the left. If they are highlighted in yellow, it means that they have come to the last two meetings in the quarter, in this last quarter. So two of three meetings, which is what I was asking. You know, if you can participate and become active, and it would be nice if you could come to at least two of the meetings each quarter. The ones that are in green are actually groups that have come to the last three of three meetings. So there's 25 nonprofits right now. There's always people asking about it, and we're getting ready to start a, not a membership tribe, because it's not really about membership. The $36 that an organization pays to be involved really is just covering the cost of the meeting for them to attend for the year. So if you say $3 for each meeting, it's $36 to be involved. That covers the one training per month. And then each of these nonprofits is also part of a Facebook group so that they can interact and start to build that culture. Every nonprofit in the area can be a part of this group, and they can come together for the month. They don't have to necessarily pay that $36. They can come and check it out, and there's no cost. But if they want to come and keep coming, then we ask them, you know, pay the $36, become part of the group. If they don't want to do that, they can come anyway. They just would pay a fee for the times when they're there. Okay? Every nonprofit also has the opportunity to participate in what we call the tellerevents.com. This was the very first project that we put together after the meeting in October. I think this started at the end of November, and it really is a Facebook page where anybody can go, tellerevents.com, look at the events, and see events that nonprofits are hosting. Every nonprofit that wants to be involved in posting on there can become an editor. We've had no problems with that. They go on, they add their items, and everybody, if there's a message or something, they'll respond to it, and it's building, again, that culture. You can see on the four squares there, those are actually statistics that I took off of that page yesterday. So you notice on the bottom line, there's pluses. There's a plus 26. There's a plus 7,500. There's 208, and there's plus 50. Those are all things that have happened in the last 90 days to raise those numbers up. So this program is working. It's growing. The other thing every nonprofit can participate in is the Teller Gives Back column, and that started in January. It's in the Courier, Pike's Peak Courier-View, and if you're looking at this month, it's going to be about the Lighter Side of Christmas Parade. It's telling people how they give back. They're not always asking for donations or, you know, sponsorships. They also give back. So if you read this column each month, you'll find out how the nonprofits are giving back. And then we always host a happy hour. We do that on the fifth Tuesday of every month, so when there's five Tuesdays, there's five months that have that, had that in 2019, and we get together at different locations. And that's just a way for nonprofits to be featured. They get to talk about themselves to the, if we're doing it like at the Country Lodge, then anybody who's in the room is hearing about what those nonprofits do. What's coming up, though, is the most exciting thing, and it's collaborative fundraising. And the idea with this is that nonprofits are coming together, some of the ones that are in the first collaborative fundraiser in the room. We have the Woodland Wind Symphony, and we have the Lighter Side of Christmas Parade here. But we're going to do three of these in 2020. And the first one is actually a social media training with Kevin Keneble. Now, anybody who knows who Kevin Keneble is, you may not, but there's a lot of people who do, because he speaks internationally about social media. He's written a book with McGraw-Hill on how to advance your business through social media and networking. And so he is willing to come here to Woodland Park and spend time with us. We were going to actually have this fundraiser in January, but as I was going around and I'm talking to different people in the community, people are like, "Well, why do I need to do social media?" And, you know, we want to make sure that people come. So in January, we've pushed this fundraiser back, so it'll be in the spring, and in January, we're still having Kevin Keneble, but he's actually going to be, it's going to be a live webinar. And he's going to be telling people why they want to come and see him when we have the big event, probably at the end of April. So the other two events that we're looking at are a art event, where it's a week-long of painting, plein air painting within Woodland Park. And then the third one, I'm not quite ready to announce that one, it would be in the So the social media training with Kevin is two parts. The first part is the live webinar on January 15th, and there's also going to be a panel of experts in the room. We're still going to host it at the Cultural Center, and we actually have sponsorship opportunities, but it's from 9:00 to 11:00. For someone to come and be part of that group, because there's networking involved, it's $15. If they want to bring a friend, it's 20 for two. So we do have sponsorships, which are either in-kind or there's a $75 sponsorship, and I'll explain those, because I have the ones that we already have in, the sponsors that have already signed up. I'll show you those. The second part, though, is the third quarter, and that's when he comes for a full day of training. We start at 8:30 in the morning. We go until 2:30 in the afternoon. There's fees from $45 to $75, depending on the activity, and at the end of the day, he's having dinner with all the sponsors. And anybody who has gone through the whole day of activity, who wants to pay the extra money, to go to dinner. He's doing all this, and so why Kevin? Why do we want to do this, and why now, and why a fundraiser in Woodland Park? Well, because this is a different opportunity. We're actually giving a service to someone who is coming to a fundraiser that then they can go ahead and they can benefit from. So that's why this idea works. Why Kevin? Because of his history, and because he is the most recommended business speaker out of over 300,000 speakers. He's the most recommended speaker, and that was in 2018. He's willing to come to Woodland Park. He's doing what he's doing in January at no cost. Okay, so the webinar, that's, he's not charging us for that. He's co-authored the book. He doesn't offer this kind of opportunity everywhere, and if he does, he's charging a huge fee when he goes. He used to live here in Monument, so people in Colorado, they know him. They go to his trainings. People from Colorado Springs will come up here to see him. But now he lives in Oregon, so he's coming, he's flying in with his own money to do that. But there's more. The reason that Kevin and I have connected is because when I first met him, Lenore Hotchkiss actually sent me to one of his trainings back in 2010, and I found out he was from New Jersey, and we frequent the same hot dog stand, okay? So Johnny's, and anybody I take to New Jersey goes to Johnny's Hot Dogs, because they're just phenomenal. So this is Johnny's Hot Dog Stand, and that's why we have that connection, and that's, it's okay for me to call him and ask him, "Hey, you know, Kevin, will you help us out?" So the healthier our nonprofits are in this community, the more benefits they can provide to our people. So what we're doing as a co-op is we're offering sponsorship opportunities to our local community first, but we're going to spread, right? So there's opportunities there, but if, you know, you feel like you're being asked too much to give, then we're going to go down to the Springs, and we're going to ask them if they want to sponsor the activity. So Part One, Social Media in Our Backyard, is what we're calling it in January, and that is going to, the sponsors we already have are Paleo Bond, we have Harmonized Brain Centers, we have A through Z Storage, and we have space for one more, okay? That's a $75 sponsorship. There's a lot of benefits that go along with it, but I didn't put those on here. If someone's interested, you can ask me. The in-kind sponsors, this is something different. It's a centerpiece sponsor. So what you do is you bring a centerpiece to the event, and that goes home with someone as a door prize. But on your centerpiece, you can market your business. So who we have right now? We have the Woodland Park Wind Symphony, we have Dinosaur Brokers, we have Peak Price Colorado Real Estate, and I was going to do one with my business as well, which is SOAR. So we have six more openings on that. We're doing 10. The beneficiaries for this first fundraiser are Teller Senior Coalition, Woodland Park Wind Symphony, Lighter Side of Christmas Parade, and the Mountain Top Cycling Club. Now, they all buy into this program, so they pay a $250 fee to participate, and they will take at least five times that amount home. That's the return I'm promising. So we do have an opening, because Focus on the Forest is busy in the spring. If we would have had this event in January, they were on board, but because we're moving that whole fundraiser out, there's an opening. So if you know of a nonprofit who is interested in participating in this first event, then let me know. Contact me. Okay. So there is a cost to get the collaborative fundraisers on going, right? We have to, first of all, Kevin's our first guest, and we do have to pay him some money to come. I would prefer that all the sponsorship money goes to the nonprofits. So I'm looking for a founding benefactor to fund the first event. The first event provides seed money for the second event. So we take our seed money from the first, we pay Kevin, we get all of our sponsors, and we still do our thing, and then at the end, we have saved a certain portion of that founding benefactor's fee so that it could be put towards the second event, and then that just keeps happening. It just keeps happening, and nonprofits continue to buy in. So that is, let me make sure I've gone through everything there, so it does, it provides seed money for the next. So I just wanted to let everyone know what the cooperative is doing, and how successful it is continuing to grow and provide opportunities, and again, the stronger we can make our nonprofits in this community, the stronger our people will be, because they'll have services to provide. Thank you.
Gail, thank you very much. What kind of hit are we looking for, the seed money? What are you looking for there?
I'm looking for, we're looking for $5,000 to start it, and the return on that is easily is easily three times that amount in the end. So, and then that keeps multiplying. So if we have, if we have three of these events next year, and there's five different nonprofits involved each time, that's 15 nonprofits that are raising money.
Thank you. Also, anybody else?
You're welcome.
Gail, thanks very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thanks, Gail.
Okay, we move on to additions, deletions, or corrections, and we're going to... Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to move 10C to table it to November 21st, so that we got the budget last night, have a chance to actually spend more than a couple hours, or whatever we spent today. Please. We have a motion to move 10C.
I actually would second it, on the count that Darwin's new and hasn't really had a chance to look over anything. It's just a thought.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion about moving 10C to our next meeting, the 21st of November?
Because I didn't think about that.
Okay, Suzanne?
No.
Bart?
Yes. Yes.
You Barr?
Yes.
Me?
No.
Matt Dorado?
Yes.
Soria?
Yes.
Sawyer?
No.
The motion...
This is...
...necessary.
Okay. And we will move on to the consent calendar, Suzanne.
In the area, the secret of the 19th consent calendar, we have two items. We have the minutes from October 17, regular system company, and we also have this evening expenditures for September 2011.
Counsel, any questions? If not, we'll just entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second. Second. Suzanne?
Yes.
You Barr?
Yes.
Yes.
Matt Dorado?
Is it appropriate for me to vote on this particular, is it? I haven't even looked at it, so I...
Can recuse.
I would rather recuse, since I haven't seen it.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Barr? Yes. I also have a question. Yes.
The motion carries to the...
Well? Did we stream the sessions last night, both of them? The work sessions?
We only streamed at the 10(c)...
Okay.
Work session was not...
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to public comment on items not on the agenda. I've got a couple people that have signed up with no indication as to the agenda item. If you want to speak on something that is not on the agenda this evening, this would be your chance, and you can raise your hand, and I will call on you. If you want to speak relative to something on the agenda, we will certainly call on you when the time comes. So, this is your opportunity. Yes, sir. No, sir. If you'll come forward. Sir? Sir? Thank you. This is in respect for everybody that's watching at home.
Yes, my name is Mac Burks, and I was just asking if Agenda Item 7(a) will be open for public comment?
It will.
Okay. I would like to comment at that time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, then we will move, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. My bad. Young lady? If you'll just give us your name?
It's Casey.
I'm sorry, first and last name?
Casey Coronado. I have a couple questions when it comes to city areas. I'm under the impression that Sturman Industries is private property, and I heard that that's going to be coming city property sometime soon. How is that pertaining?
Let the city manager answer that question.
The property recently transitioned from a commercial property to a nonprofit, non-taxable nonprofit. It will remain in that, under Andrew Womack Ministries.
Okay.
It is now the headquarters for Andrew Womack Ministries.
So, in the future plans, that's on the mapping for Parks Trails, are, there's, I guess, a future sidewalk that's going there? Who would be paying for that?
Sally, if you could come up, I would appreciate it. Stuart, you are aware of it.
The Parks Trails and Open Space map is a visionary map to identify where future recreational facilities or trails and sidewalks should be considered as development occurs. And development occurs, then those sidewalks and trails are typically constructed by the developer. So, it would be paid for by the development.
Thank you, Sally. Okay, anybody else? Okay, now, we will move on to Agenda Item 7(a) and approving Resolution 850, and Jason Myers. And Sally.
Should I recuse myself? Okay, we're there.
There you go. Thank you very much. Sir.
Your Honor, thank you. Well, I think I need to recuse myself, too, because I got served with a legal...
Your microphone, please.
I got, served with a lawsuit petition with a...
And so, I may have to recuse myself also.
We'll ask Jason, because if I'm not mistaken...
Please advise.
We all were.
We all were.
I'm not sure exactly what this petition is. I haven't had a chance to review it, as to whether or not it has any substance to this issue. So, the matter before us is not a quasi judicial issue.
All right. So, I apologize, I was on mute. I'm not familiar with the lawsuit. We just got it about 10 minutes ago. I don't know what, if anything, of substance is in here. The issue before us right now is not a quasi judicial issue. So, I don't know what bearing, if any, this potential lawsuit has.
What would be your advice for us?
At this point, we're not under any court order or any restraints to move forward with the considerations that we have, that I'm aware of.
Great, thank you. Are you good with that, Val?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Jase? I'm sorry, you may not. Sally?
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Resolution 850 is concerning an agreement between the Village at Tamarack LLC, also known as M3XP2, and the City of Woodland Park with respect to the necessary improvements to State Highway 67 at Tamarack Parkway. And during the last three months, the staff has been working with the developer and CDOT to establish an amicable agreement for these improvements on Highway 67. So, I will begin by just letting you know what this is not going to be discussed, which is the proposed development of Village at Tamarack on a multifamily suburban permitted use development of 53 small manufactured homes on 6.68 acres, Lot 5, Tamarack Tech Park, filing number 5. So, what we will be discussing this evening is the agreement for the improvements on Highway 67, which is circled in blue, the area between Research Drive and Tamarack Parkway. And this conundrum actually began 25 years ago with an access permit to Tamarack Parkway that the city signed. But I'd like to begin with just our most recent chronology, which began on May 16th with an application for a site plan review to develop the villages at Tamarack. That review took a couple of months, and an administrative approval was granted by the planning director, and there were 12 conditions. Condition number two was written in such a way that the applicant was required to revise the traffic study and make the necessary improvements to Highway 67 in accordance with CDOT requirements. And those were to be done prior to a certificate of occupancy or acceptable assurance security guarantee provided. Then, on August 5th, the applicant submitted appeal to condition number two, claiming that there was not a rational nexus between the requirements and the impacts. In layman's terms, that means that he felt that there was a government overreach requiring the private property owner to do more than what was a rational nexus or required reasonable requirement. The city is going to collect transportation capital fees in the amount of $26,818. They claimed that it was inconsistent application of the codes and requirements and in violation of property rights and existing entitlements. This appeal was required to be scheduled within the next two hearings or regular meetings of the city council. That was done on September 5th and subsequently tabled in order to give the staff time to work through and research this issue, which was actually very interesting, because we learned that there was an existing CDOT access permit from 1995 that the city had signed off on as a permittee, which said that the city would be obligated to make the improvements to Highway 67 when they were warranted. Lo and behold, those warrants were established four years later, when the city developed the Police Operations Center and the U.S. Post Office was built on Tamarack Parkway. So, the traffic study from 1999 showed that the city was responsible for making improvements to Highway 67 and thus being obligated to construct a left turn lane, and it is still the city's responsibility for that at this point. We have received a probable cost estimate in round numbers of $750,000. The developer will pay their transportation capital fees of $28,000, plus they have agreed to contribute to this project an additional $66,000 for a total of $93,000. The city also collected previous transportation fees for the school, the fitness club, Rampart Surveys, and the U.S. Post Office in a total amount of $68,255. Therefore, today, the city's net cost for these improvements, which is a bidirectional center lane on Highway 67 between Research Drive and Tamarack Parkway, is approximately And we will reprioritize the 2020 road projects in order to be able to fund the improvements for Highway 67, which were warranted back 20 years ago. So, now, therefore, the resolution will rewrite condition number two with four points. First, of course, the applicant is required to remit their transportation capital fees as well as the additional contribution to total $93,000. We will revise the traffic impact study in order to include Research Drive and make the necessary improvements during the year 2020, next year. Also, number two, any further development by M3XP2 at Tamarack Parkway, they will pay their transportation capital fees, which will be earmarked for any future improvements to Highway 67 or Tamarack Parkway. And if further or future developments independently trigger additional improvements, those will be borne by the developer, which is typical for the city. If improvements are not constructed within five years, which is highly unlikely, the city believes that these improvements need to be done in 2020 as soon as possible, then the city will refund the additional amount that this developer has offered. And then, lastly, if this agreement is agreed to by the city council this evening, then the developer will withdraw the appeal, as the contentions of the appeal have hereby been resolved. So, with that, the staff recommends approval of Resolution 850 as written. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Sally, do me a favor, and go back to the first slide, just so everybody understands what the discussion will be relative to 7(a). Has nothing to do with the development. It's all about the agreement and relative to 67. Would you go over that one more time for us, please?
Yes. The development has been through the staff review. It's been through appeals, two other appeals, that the Board of Adjustment has supported the staff's recommendation with one minor change. And we are not discussing the merits of this development tonight. It is purely the condition number two that dealt with the off-site improvements on Highway 67.
Thank you. Counsel, who would like to start?
I'll go ahead and start. I wish the presentation had a little bit more information on the consequences of not doing it and what CDOT has warned us, I believe, if we do not do these.
When the access permit was signed in 1995, that obligated the city to make improvements. And we have been told by CDOT that should these improvements not be done, they have the authority to be able to close this access to only a right-in and right-out. So, no left turns would be able to be made. That would be very terrible for our community, as our Police Operations Center, the Post Office, as well as businesses and schools depend upon that access. So, it is not a very advantageous consequence.
So, basically, they would put a barrier down the middle of the road, and people needing to go there would have to go past it, go down to the next turn, do a U-turn, come back, and then they would be able to turn in.
Correct.
Also, if we decide not to do this, we are on, we would have, if the next issue comes down, the cost would be higher. And then, what else would happen? I noticed that the developer would have to refund the money there. So, then, what would be, just a rough guess, how much would it cost five years from now? Maybe Ben can answer that.
Infrastructure improvements are escalating on an annual basis.
Yeah, they escalate. We're looking at the construction cost index of roughly 3.2%. So, project that out five years from now. We're looking at over $1 million, estimating maybe 1.1. Sorry, without the calculator in front of me.
Right. So, I'd also like to let the community know that this is not, this money's coming from the 410 account, and what we're planning on doing is just taking one of our road improvements that is planned for 2020 and just pushing it off a year. Can you elaborate a little bit more on that, Ben?
Yeah, so, the recommendation from the pavement management plan, the lion's share of the... of the work that's going to be done in 2020 or slated to be done is the Kelly's and Rampart, those major roads. So the idea, or Baldwin, yes, the idea is that we would take the road that is in the best condition, because even though it's failing and recommended for full death reclamation, we'd take the road that's in the best condition and push that off to 2021, and then fix the worst roads and just do maintenance on that road that needed to be reconstructed.
Thank you. I'm going to answer some questions, and I'm not trying to trip you up. I'm not trying to attack you. I'm just trying to establish what is correct and what is not correct. 25 years might be a long time, and 20 years when it was triggered, shame on us. And now it's come to council, and we're supposed to make an intelligent vote on what you proposed. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, you proposed a two-way left-turning lane, and that is a continuous lane between opposite lanes of traffic to allow traffic to make left-hand turns in both directions. In other words, the nickname for this, people may be able to relate to me on this, is a suicide lane. Okay. This is a category-one highway, and I want to ask, are you relying on the agreement that you signed stating that you had to put a left-turning lane in there? Or is this being directed by engineers from CDOT saying this is an appropriate construction for that situation out there with over 40 miles per hour on a curb and a downward projection of the traffic and poor line of sight to be able to correct? Plus, there are no safety in this type of construction for pedestrians crossing. I live there, I see pedestrians trying to cross. Plus, number one, forget the pedestrian refuge for safety. The increased head-on collisions in a situation like this on a straightaway on a four-lane highway increase. This is not me talking, these are studies about this type of lane. this is a high-traffic, 67 isn't the same. You can ask mine. The traffic out there has increased. This is high-traffic. This is a poor condition for that, and I can't imagine a road engineer would approve that type of construction in this situation. And $750,000 is quite an expensive price for this type of construction. I would think they would have preferred to see and suggest a four-legged intersection at that point.
So the basis of this recommendation comes from a traffic study that is done by Lee Scott and Cleary Transportation Consultants. Jeff Hodgson is one of the best and well-respected traffic engineers in the region, and he is the one who has analyzed the data, and the data right now shows that there are 4,362 trips on Highway 67 at this point. So this project is adding 350 trips to the highway. The recommendation then will be taken by the engineers who design the roadway, and we had Kim Lee Horn give us the cost estimate, and they will likely be our designers of this. And then CDOT will vet those designs very carefully with their engineers as well. And it is CDOT who is driving the need, as well as this traffic study and revised study that is making the recommendation for this bidirectional turn lane for less than 5,000 average daily trips. It is not unusual to see this type of design for highways in these types of environments. And it is recommended to include both Research and Tamarack because of the proximity of these two streets, local streets. Don't know if you guys want to add anything.
One sec, let me see if staff has anything to add.
If I can speak to the long-term planning, because Councilmember Sonnier brings up some very valid points that we need to consider. So the theory behind this is that when this project goes into engineering for this particular, we'll call it a temporary solution with the suicide lane, as you refer to it, when that goes to engineering, what the plan will be is a Phase 1 and Phase 2 engineering part of the plans. So the Phase 1 will design for the immediate requirements of CDOT, but with the long-term plan that any work that we do is leading towards the correct requirements to make this a safe intersection as a Phase 2 rolls out. So the Phase 1 and the Phase 2 will be designed the same way, so we're not having to redo any work that we've done before. So we plan our taper lengths, we plan our widths correctly, so we're not spending any extra money that we don't have to. And then, once we address this immediately to make sure this intersection is safe, we can be competitive for funds in 2024, and we'll have engineering designed that we already have from Evergreen up to Kelly's, the county road. In the interim between now and 2024, we'll do engineering between that middle section up to Research, and then we will also have the Phase 2 final plans so that we're, everything is shovel-ready and we can be competitive for those funds. And CDOT has confirmed that when we put ourselves in that position, we are far more likely to get those funds, and has made commitments to us to help us match. And so for the long-term plan of the city, it will cost us substantially less if we go this route.
With all due respect, CDOT has made commitments to shovel-ready projects on 67 Phase 1, and we have introduced 67 Phase 1 and 67 Phase 2, and they have committed to us in 2024, I believe it's $1 million, how many dollars?
1.4 million.
1.4 million, which won't even complete Phase 1, let alone go into a shovel-ready on Phase 2, which goes out past the golf course, which we have submitted to PPACG, which represents us to CDOT, and they do a nice job. But unfortunately, unfortunately for us and the state of Colorado, we do not have the money to do these transportation projects, and the monies that do become available are eaten up by the front range because of the population growth down there and just the size and the power that they have down there versus what we have up here. I am not a po-dun person sitting up here gonna accept this as a answer, and that this linear lane, and suicide is just a term it was given, it's not my term, is not an appropriate construction for this. As a matter of fact, in the highway safety manuals, if you would read, and I'm not trying to belittle anybody either, they do not suggest this type of construction in this situation and in speeds that are on this highway. There's no maneuverability, you can't maneuver, it causes problems, and it's dangerous. And you have answered my question, too. You may have a reputable engineer, traffic engineer, I don't doubt that in the least, but CDOT has not put their stamp on this. And I'm sure when they hear this argument, they might reconsider the situation of the curve over there, the speeds, the line of sight, the maneuverability, the wildlife, the non-safety corridor pedestrians crossing to go to the bike path and everything else, plus Research right down there with bus park, businesses, subdivisions, developments, way out of hand. Los Angeles County on the other side with Sunnywood, private property entrance right there behind the Mormon Church, the Mormon Church coming in there, Apache Trail, very, very congested. And in the past, oh geez, I've seen three accidents out there pretty recently. I'm sure you can speak to that, but it's getting very busy out there, and I do not like this design. I will say that straight up. But if CDOT wants to put their stamp on it and bring it back here, I will reconsider this argument that I have right here.
Mr. Sonnier, we have had several meetings with the CDOT engineer, Jason Nelson, and this is the direction he has recommended.
Well, let's see a stamp. Let's see that approval from CDOT with that stamp, because if somebody gets hurt out there, I do not want the city of Woodland Park to be responsible for an accident. I don't mean this to get any applause or anything, I'm not taking sides with anybody. I am looking at the issue of a highway situation here that I am not particularly in agreement with, and my arguments, I believe, are sound. And I'm not trying to belittle anybody in this city or on council, I'm just trying to state my opinions, and I appreciate everything that you've done. But that is my position and my position only, and I could be proved wrong at any time.
Again, the engineers are recommending this approach, from the traffic study to the CDOT engineer.
Well, I'd like to see their stamp on that one.
They will be putting their stamp on it when they have a set of construction drawings to be able to review.
Thank you.
So Paul, what's the solution then? You'll speak up to the engineer's position. So does that work? So Paul, what's the solution then?
I will not take the position of an engineer, but you need a four-legged intersection out there, both at Tamarack and there, and possibly a traffic light.
So you're okay with spending more money?
I absolutely am if it is for the safety and the welfare of the people of Woodland Park and the quality of life of people traveling through Woodland Park. This is a scenic highway, and we only have two emergency exits out of this town.
There are less than 5,000 average daily trips on this stretch of road at this point. The engineers look at the standards very carefully and will propose what is best for the situation at this time.
There are five potential, 5,000 potential accidents out there with people turning on and off and coming in and out of there with a school being there, with a post office being there, police station emergency.
Mr. Sonnier, I did ask the police department to pull the records over the last five years of accidents. They averaged 3.3 per year. There was one year with seven accidents, there was another year with one accident. It is changing, and we want to address that with the improvements this year for left-turn lanes between Research and Tamarack Parkway. I also found a map. I'm not sure when this was done, but this map had various segments that were to be improved, and it started in 2007 with a stretch, and then 2009. This section was supposed to be done, if this map had been followed by the city, this section was going to be done in 2011. We didn't do it. It's a shame, but now we are faced with the situation where we understand that the access permit obligated the city to take action when it was warranted. It was warranted 20 years ago, we didn't do it, we're now where we're at. This is the best we can do at this point in time.
It's a very noble stance that you take. I applaud you for that, but we're way behind the eight ball here. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to reiterate what Sally just said. These improvements were triggered and required in 1999. This is something that has been a requirement for 20 years, and the city, it was a different set of council, it was a different set of staff, it was a whole different set of circumstances, and it got lost, and it didn't happen. And so we can't change that now. The only thing we can do is find a way forward and to address it, because CDOT, it's their road, it is their road, and our city's development of the Police Operations Center and the post office is what triggered this. And so it's up to us now to solve the issue. And so that's where I'm coming from, and I'm not qualified to dispute anything that our city engineer has said, anything that CDOT has said, and if those that have that knowledge and skill to be able to make those determinations are recommending this, then who am I to question that? I rely on the best information the professionals can give me in making decisions. So I just think that we need to remember that at this point. So thank you.
If I could perhaps couch this in a different way, what the resolution before you is suggesting is what is the developer's requirements in regards to how we solve this issue? And city is taking over the remainder of the responsibility, because this is something that's been on our radar for 20-plus years. Certainly, if council would like to, or if we have the ability to, I don't know all the finances, there's nothing by passing this resolution that would prohibit the city from creating more design or, I don't know what the best way, over-engineering it for today's purposes, other than the limitations of finances. So the resolution is delineating what the developer would be responsible for, which is the $22,000 or $27,000 plus the additional $67 that they're willing to participate in for the total of 93. The remainder of the city is on the city's shoulders as per the 20-year-old agreement and requirement. Certainly, if we need to re-engineer this to make it more safe or wider or otherwise as the city deems fit, the resolution wouldn't be affected in that nature, because we're responsible anyways.
I don't know how the city deems fit when you're dealing with a state highway. There are rules and regulations that are there in the transportation, U.S. Transportation Department. Those are what we have to go by. What have they been, sleeping on this for 20 years? They knew this agreement was there, they went into this agreement with the city. Where has CDOT been all this time? What are they, a bunch of robots? They don't see this? This has been here for 25 years. Now, it's our problem to solve, and it's our problem to solve with construction, and to answer your question, that is inadequate, whether you say there's 5,000 or whatever. It's a potential hazard. I'm trying to fix something, not to add to something that is not adequate for what we have there. And I'm trying to do it looking through the lenses of someone who has built bridges and highways in this state and other states. That's how I'm looking at it. And I'm not trying to take over the position of an engineer or that I'm even in this business anymore because I'm retired. I'm trying to look at this as someone who represents the citizens of Woodland Park and look at the safety of these citizens, the health and welfare of them, and the people who travel through our beautiful city so that they could travel through it safely and comfortably, and try to make that, please don't applaud, and try to make that the objective of this project, and for the people going in and out of the Village of Tamarack. I don't want to see them get hurt either, and I certainly don't want to get hurt, because I space it when I try to make a turn out of Research, and I space it out and I don't realize that there's a car coming down the road, because I'm getting older and more senior. I'm just trying to put together an argument that people could appreciate and understand, and I do my diligence as someone representing the people, and also trying to bring some solid information so that this council can look at it and say, "Paul, you're off your rocker," or "Paul, I can see..." or "Paul, I can see validity to what you're saying." And I'm not trying to put Sally on the hot seat. Also, CDOT, there's a lot to go around here. There have been many budgets, there have been many councils and administrations that have gone in 25 years. And I want to keep this up in the light of day on the table so everybody can see it because I got this here in front of me. I don't appreciate getting something like this, but I guess you have to do what you gotta do. And so, if it becomes something in the case, I tell you, this is how I'm looking at it, period. End of story. If it goes in, it goes in. You put a suicide lane in there, you put a suicide lane in it, it's actually a lateral lane, double left-hand turn lane. So, let's use the appropriate terms so these engineers can do it and move on. If that's what it's going to be, that's what it's going to be. And yes, you go down the center of the highway and you make sure that you're not wasting your money and you move forward and all that good stuff and everything. You have an obligation to look at it and say, "Okay, this makes sense." Or at least this will not be wasting money. And in the future, we have looked at the highway on the center of the highway. We've done our improvements there. We've improved the shoulders and did what we have to do. But you still don't have your turn-in lanes, so people can turn in. You don't have your turn-in lane so people can turn out and you still have that traffic coming. You haven't really resolved the issue except turning left so they don't put a barricade down the middle of the highway and shame on them if they would ever do it. Because if I was the police chief and CDOT came out there and put a barricade down the middle, I'd be out there with my cops and ready to hammer somebody down and get this squared away. That's the way I feel. That's how I feel. But that's not what you would really do.
Counsel, is there any other discussion before we go to public comment?
Well, if I can, I'd like to, because I think this discussion has completely skewed what the staff has done to do an excellent job in preparing us for future phases of this project. I'm talking incredible work that our engineer has done to phase this in with the proposal that you just talked about, which is similar to what Highway 24 is, which services 32,000 daily trips a day, 85% less than Highway 67, would cost 12 times the amount that we have to put on this highway right now from the city's budget, 12 times. And so, they're doing the best they can to come up with a solution for the current problem that exists here, that has existed for 20 years. And it was, why has it existed 20 years? We didn't have the funding 20 years ago to do this project. So, I just want to make sure we clarify some of these issues before it seems as if there was some inadequacy in the planning on this process.
Before we move forward, I'm going to only say this once. Please show respect. That means no talking out loud when we're talking, no clapping. I know this is an emotional issue for a lot of you. But if we're going to do this right, we're going to do it right, and that's showing respect for everybody. You're going to have an opportunity to come and speak if you'd like to. In the meantime, speaking from your seat is going to get you removed from the audience. It's just the only way to do it and to do it right. I think you will all agree. And so, please bear with us. We're going to try to make the right decision, but with people talking out loud when others are talking, it just not provide the right environment to make the right decision. So, bear with us and show respect, please.
May I say one thing? Since I've started this emotion out here, I totally agree with Mayor Levy. I am not up here trying to prod people on or give you a bone to come up here and then argue. I'm up here just to put it in the light of day. Please respect us and don't get argumentative. I would hate to see that.
I don't know if that's on.
You're on.
I basically had three questions and I think city managers answered one of them. I was going to ask, since there are this number of 5,000 trips on this stretch of road or under that actually, give us some comparisons of, but I think Darren did a nice job of what we see on versus Highway 24, for example, which has 85% more than this. My other questions were, is this, as I understand this, it appears to be a stop-gap measure to solve the immediate problem that we're faced with right now. And as the city attorney pointed out, it doesn't prevent us from making further improvements should we decide to do that either now or later. And there are other alternative design possibilities that I'm assuming that the traffic engineering consulting people pursued and ruled out for the time being. And I'd like to know on what basis those were ruled out. Was it money restraints? Was it just not appropriate for this situation in their opinion? Those are my questions.
Yeah, if I may speak to that. So, we initially spoke with the on-call engineer to discuss just fixing this whole problem and setting it up for four lanes and the correct turn lanes right now. Their estimate on that was close to $3.9 million, which if you look at that, if we are paying for that upfront right now without trying to be competitive for those funds, it will devastate the 410 fund. And if you look at that, we would have to bond. We don't have enough tax money coming in, so all the pavement management efforts would be completely negated. We would have to push off all these projects and all our good roads that we're trying to keep good right now, we won't have the money to do anything to fund that. So, yes, it is a stop-gap measure right now, but it's a stop-gap measure with intelligent planning to say, "We're going to do this right now so that we're set up to be competitive in a couple more years so that we can have the funds to make this happen and still be able to maintain the rest of the city infrastructure." It's a really tough spot for the city to be in, but we're trying to make the best decision given the rules and the requirements and the existing funds that we've got right now.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I might, again, what we're asking for tonight on this resolution is to clarify what it is the developer is responsible for. This is the plan that we've tentatively got approved by CDOT. It has to be engineered. There might be some changes. There might be some differences. The city would be responsible per our agreement 20 years ago, but the resolution is delineating and defining exactly what it is the developer is responsible for. And that should be the focus of what we're calling for tonight is, does this work for council? In essence, the developer has come to the table with three times the requirement under the code to put a resolution or a fix out there. And the city has the opportunity now to leverage that funding, what we've collected previously, to come up with a solution or, again, engineer it better if necessary.
So, Jason, I'd like to clarify with the community because it's, if, even if we don't pass this, it allows the developer not to pay the $93,000, only the $26,000. It doesn't stop the potential of this development happening. Just be clear on that.
Well, this has got nothing to do with-
I know, but I, I've got some wide eyes out here, okay?
I understand, but this has got nothing to do with any development.
I realize that, but this link right here, the population out here thinks it does, okay?
Well, we're trying to make it clear. You think, you can't speak for them.
Well, I'm, we'll see then.
This is about the, this is about the agreement between the developer and the city.
I'm well aware of that.
That's all it is.
Okay, I'm aware of that.
Anyone that moves forward and speaks on 7A, that's what we're going to expect. If you don't speak about the relationship and the decision between the developer and the city, then you're going to be asked to leave the podium. Okay, is that clear? You'll have your chance. If you have issues on how it's designed, any of those kinds of things, this is not the time. That said, if you have, if anyone wants to speak on 7A, we'll start with this young man here and we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Is your name again, please?
Yes, my name is Mac Burks. I live at 363 Highview Court in Woodland Park. I am not technically in the city, but I do receive city services. So, thank you for the water and the sewer. And you can tell by my accent, I ain't from around here. My wife and I chose to make our retirement home here in Colorado a little over three years ago, and we chose Woodland Park specifically. And we liked it so much that we got my wife's sister and brother to retire here, and now her mother lives at the Aspen. So, we've kind of invaded the place. We spent a year looking at houses online and took two or three trips here to find one that we like, and we really like it. And I'm not seeking any drama or anything like that, and I don't have any access to crime. I appreciate what you do and the time you spend helping to lead the city. Back when I was younger, I did a couple of terms on a local school board. And one of the things I learned very quickly was that you could not check your brains or reasoning power at the door. Sometimes you had to dig into staff recommendations to make sure they fit the vision for the district and that the alternative selected was the best and that ultimately students were the recipients of those benefits. Reasonable people can have different opinions. I hope that you use your independent thinking and reasoning power on these proposals before you tonight. Are they best for the Woodland Park? Are they well thought out? Are they fair to the citizens of Woodland Park? Is the developer getting the best of the deal? I have looked at your packet and it brought back flashbacks to my time on the school board, and I'm glad I don't have to look through that thing every month. The money spent to install the turn lanes to meet CDOT approval was triggered by the But it wasn't included in the city's budget for 2020. It wasn't on the radar. You had two roads, Kelly's Road and Baldwin Road, that were scheduled for capital improvements in 2020. So, this just came up because of the development. I guess the questions I have is that when we were at the Board of Adjustment meeting, we were told that the developer was responsible for the expenditure to meet CDOT requirements. Now, I understand we went back and found out that, yeah, the city, because of things that happened in the 90s, has some of the responsibility for that. But now we're looking at over 85% of the cost to do this improvement. And so, before you make that expenditure of $750,000, I think you ought to look at it very closely to make sure that it wasn't triggered just because of the development going in there. Now, there are, you know, 4,362 trips up and down Highway 67, but what happened was the left turns. How many left turns are going to be our right turns if you're coming from up north? You know, how many, you know, how many left turns are going to be happening there? And I agree, you know, suicide lanes may not be the best solution. You budgeted $1.8 million to rebuild Kelly's Road and Baldwin. I guess that's also rampart range. You know, why does this project, the turn lanes, take priority over those? It's because of the development. So, we're going to drop those and do this left turn lane. And so, I didn't understand how the developer's cost of $90,000 was determined. The city may be partially responsible because of the agreements in the 90s, but do we have an 88% responsibility? There's a lot more left turns going in because of that development. Now, how firm is this $750,000 estimate? What is included? Is it curbing gutters? Do we look at the bad drainage that's on the east side of that road? I mean, you come through in heavy rain and there's mud rolling out on the highway. You know, in my career, I managed a lot of projects, multimillion-dollar projects. And I guarantee you, very seldom was I surprised by a lower cost estimate or a lower total cost than the estimate that came in. Generally, they go up. So, who's going to be responsible when it goes up? Will a developer have to take in a part of that? And also, how will it tie into the long-term plans? Now, I heard some talk about the long-term plans, but will we have to tear out what we're going to put in to meet the long-term plans?
They're going to answer your question the best they can. I've given you more than your three minutes, so.
Oh, I thought I had five. I'm sorry. It said five on the sheet.
I gave you more. We've got 100 people in here. Five minutes each will be, will-
Okay, well, I'll wrap it up.
Okay, I appreciate it. And just so everybody knows, they can't give their time to somebody else, just so you're aware of that.
Okay. So, the other things I think that you guys ought to consider, you know, with this deal, with this developer, will that set precedent for other developers that we have to pay for their costs too? So, I would be careful of setting a precedent. And I think these are reasonable requests that you could make of city staff, and they should be addressed before this item is approved. Turn lanes don't appear to have been on the city's radar and were not in the city's capital improvement plan for 2020. Turn lanes have been placed ahead of other planned work only to meet the developer's needs. If they have a must for citizen safety, shouldn't they have been identified in the current capital plan for 2020? It is time to make this development stand on its own merit, and if it can't cover its fair share of the cost, then it should not be built. Please use your power and dive into this proposal and ensure that it is fair to the citizens of Woodland Park. Thank you.
So, regardless of the, regardless of what projects have to be done in the future as part of the pavement management plan, we have to fix this as mandated by CDOT right now. We have to meet their requirements. They've told us that that's what we have to do. So, it's not, it's putting it into the priority list as soon as we get the information from CDOT that mandates that we have to do that. So, yes, according to the pavement management plan, those two major projects, there's also a couple of other smaller projects that are supposed to be included in there that is all part of that $1.8 million cost. But because this has to be fixed, we have right now, as mandated by CDOT, we have to slide it into the 2020 budget. But the good thing is we can offset another project that's on another road and still maintain our long-term capital improvement plan and still stay up to date with our pavement management plan. We can get back on track with the pavement management plan in 2021 if we do it this way. To reiterate again, there's a reason why we are proposing the engineering to be done as a Phase One and Phase Two solution for this so that we're planning ahead and we are not tearing out any, we're not doing any work that doesn't work towards the long-term solution of making it a safe intersection. So, that's why we have the Phase One and Phase Two. So, every widening, it's to plan for everything to line up in the future, and that's why it's important instead of just doing a single engineering plan for just this immediate fix that we have the full set of plans done right now for the future.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak on 7A? No lady? And I didn't for the last gentleman. This is a conversation about the agreement between Village of Tamarack and the city and only that.
Absolutely. Kimberly Urban, 1250 Woodland Valley Ranch Drive, 505 Dallas Alley. So, one of my questions is, the traffic plan that was done that says it's 4,300 and some odd cars, when was that done and who commissioned that traffic study? Was it done by the city? Was it done by the developer?
I'll answer that for us.
The date on this study is a year ago, October 4th, 2018. It is being updated so that new data will include the research intersection as well as current data for today. And it was commissioned by the developer. The city is going to commission the revision. So, Lee Scott and Clary, this is a highly respected traffic consultant in the re- So Lee Scott and Clary, this is a highly respected traffic consultant in the region by CDOT and by other municipalities.
And Sally, could you speak to the regular course of how we operate? When any developer comes forward, who's responsible to provide this information?
Yes, the developer is responsible for providing the information and commissioning or contracting with the consultants, whether it's drainage, or traffic, or other specialties that require detailed studies.
I would like to ask the council that they wait on this item until we have the updated traffic study. I've lived off of Research Drive for 23 years. The traffic out there has grown. People have taken to crossing underneath the bridge and drainage area because it is unsafe. I was actually on the bike trail two years ago, and someone was turning right onto Apache Trail, and the person in front of them braked, and they didn't stop, and they ended up on the bike trail. And if I hadn't been aware, I wouldn't be here tonight. My husband was with me when it happened, and it was very scary. I did want to give kudos for the street management and also the changes that I've seen in the, in the snowplow, and I know this is off topic, but it's a time that I, I get to say it. However, you've changed the algorithm, that now the bike trails now plowed and such, so many people use it. That's great. It's not going unnoticed. And the questions that we're asking aren't in regard to the engineering work that you've done to give this suggestion on how to repair, but we do have concerns because it is very dangerous down there. So I would ask the council that you wait until we have the city, that they've gone out and asked for the new traffic updates. We have the new numbers, because that might change the feedback from the engineers at CDOT and such, if those numbers have changed dramatically over the last year, which they have. We have a lot more homes back there and a lot more businesses. And there was something else, but I'm Mike Paul. I'm on, and I forget what I was going to say, so I won't belabor it, but I would suggest that we table this until we have updated numbers.
Thank you very much. Am I mistaken? The new traffic study adds 350 more trips?
Yeah.
Is that correct? Sally, would you go over that for us, just so everybody understands?
The Village at Tamarack with the 53 small manufactured homes, it will generate 350 trips per day, based on the ITE, which is the, the standard manual allocation for that type of use.
Thank you very much. Okay, who would like to speak next?
Elizabeth Miller, 610 Pembroke Drive, Woodland Park, Colorado. And I'll be very brief. First of all, Mr. Levy asked the audience to be respectful, and I take great offense to Mr. Sawyer talking down so offensively to the people. I know exactly what we're here for. I know it has nothing to do with the development. It is for this, and I also request that the council have all the information before they make a decision, and I wonder if in these negotiations, if it's not possible for this developer, who's going to benefit immensely, to meet a little more of this expense. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't think Mr. Sawyer, I hate to speak for him, but he wasn't speaking down to anybody. He was actually defending because he just wanted to make sure that we understood.
He referred to the blank look in our eyes. I think it was very...
I think you might have misinterpreted. I'm sorry. Who else would like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, hold on a second.
Take your time.
My name is Maria Sennell. I live in Woodland Park, and actually, let me put my eyes on first. As you all know by now, we have filed suit against the city of Woodland Park based upon the decisions regarding the planning commission through the Board of Adjustment regarding the Village at Tamarack.
Excuse me, just one second. I just want to remind you, on 7A, what the subject is, please keep it to that. Thank you.
With regard to what Mr. Burks said, what Ms. Urban said, and what Ms. Miller said, and especially what Councilman Sonier said, what they said makes common sense, and we need a little bit more of that around here. But in terms of what Mayor Protem Carr said, there is an issue right now, because there's, and Mr., Mr. Myers, I don't know how you didn't recognize a Rule 106A4 motion, which is an appeal by right by the citizens from a, a decision from the Board of Adjustment. We are in litigation against the city through the District Court right now, and that's what is in front of you, and I don't understand how a city attorney could not have recognized that. That changes everything. The CDOT study, what is in 7, 9, and 10 tonight, needs to be tabled because these matters are now before the District Court. The District Court is not going to be able to give us our first hearing for a couple of weeks, because according to the clerk for Judge Sales, they are obviously in the Bereth Frazi murder trial right now. But these matters right now are before the District Court, because we didn't get a fair shake.
One more time. I'm going to give you another minute to speak regarding the agreement between the developer and the city, and that's it.
The city is being sued because of the decisions that were made, and one of the issues is the CDOT allocation and the inadequacy of the studies. Therefore, what has gone between the developer and the city is insufficient, inadequate, and subject to litigation as we speak.
I appreciate your opinion.
All right. And if I just may add a couple of things, I was taught early in life that if you do things the wrong way, and if you spend $10 on something to cut a couple of corners, and then something bad happens, you wind up having to spend the whole amount to do it right eventually, and usually it costs more because you have to take down what you did first in order to put in place what you should have done first. Once again, that's common sense, and we could use a dose of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, no man? Yes, sir. And then we'll go to Mr. Murphy next.
Joe Fury, 565 Pembroke Drive. I have a question. I have comments on 7A, 9A, and 10B. How can I make them? All, all now, or do I sit down and come back for, for 10B?
Yeah, there's three different subjects, so if you can keep it to 7A right now, and then we'll call you back for 9A and 10B. And, yes, 10B.
Okay. My comment on 7A is, a year or two ago, a developer wanted to put a chuck wagon in at Sour Dough on Highway 67, and he was told he had to put in a turn lane on 67, and because of that, he canceled his project. Currently, another developer that bought the land is putting in the pines at Tamarack, which is 26 homes. He is required to put in a turn lane prior to the start of construction. So it appears to me that whatever's happening at the Village of Tamarack, the city is doing backflips, backflips, and jumping through hoops and showing favoritism by giving them a different standard. They're, they're not being required to put in the highway improvements other than the dollar amount mentioned earlier, and they're not having to do it prior to construction like the pines at Tamarack. So I'm urging council to either table this, or I also like to thank Councilman Sonier. I think he brought, brings up some very good points. I think this should be tabled, and when it is voted on, I think this is an opportunity for our elected officials to not support the Village of Tamarack, which looks exactly like a trailer park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, if I could, for the public's edification, the, the largest difference here between other developments is an agreement that the city made with CDOT 20 years ago to do these exact improvements. Regardless of whether the Village of Tamarack exists, we are responsible for this issue.
Elijah Murphy, 204 West Midland Avenue, Woodland Park, Colorado. Listening to Mr. Sonier talk about the suicide lane and driving to sometimes three or four trips a day on 24/67 between Divide and Woodland Park, these days, common sense isn't all that common, and I cannot tell you how many times I have been passed packed traffic on that lane going up through there, people passing in that central lane at a high rate of speed, okay? It's, people have different driving habits these days, and so I was going to suggest that there be a possibility of looking at another means. I'm not a traffic engineer, but I do know that rotaries, or traffic circles, as they're sometimes called, actually have a different impact. They actually slow it down but keep traffic flowing without the addition of stoplights and all that, and I think they're a little bit cheaper. Possibility. But like I said, people's driving habits are changing a lot. I've seen it change over the last 20 years up here, and looking for a solution, if, if it's going to have to be done, how do we do it in the most intelligent and least expensive way to the taxpayer as possible? And create safety while we're at it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else on 7A?
Ryan Beatty. I am owner at 950 Tamarack Parkway, which is the Woodland Fitness Center. I do just want to step up and let council know that moving forward, that this is something that was supposed to be taken care of. Private business has paid into these funds in the past, and I would hate to see as a business owner, a barricade go up that impacts our future business there. So as far as this motion is concerned, I would like to see, you know, the thoughts go into it that, you know, it's going to impact not only Village at Tamarack, but the other businesses, schools, police department, and such. So just please keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, one last time for 7A. If not, public comment is closed. Council, do we have any other discussion before we move until we get a motion on Resolution 850?
I would like to say something.
Please.
I brought my arguments up so that this situation would be in the light of day, and it would be thought of and looked at in our strategical plan. My questions were pertinent and to the point, but I will also tell you this. Ben is looking at it in a way, and allocating monies in a way such so that this lateral lane can go in. It is needed. I don't agree with it, but it is needed. The accidents there that I've seen in the past couple of months have been rear ends. People stopped trying to turn into Tamarack and trying to turn into Research. I think it's unfair that the city has put in this position. I think it is terrible to hear about long-term planning and not this being the planning and on the radar. My hope is that the questions I raised stirred everybody's insight into the problem that we have on 67. I believe it has. I will say, if this lane does go in, despite the safety aspects that it does pose to traffic, it will allow cars to turn left into the two, Tamarack and Research, which is desperately needed out there. The foresight and looking at lining it up with the center of the highway is the appropriate way to look at it. We do have the land on the sides to take care of it. As a matter of fact, I have no godly idea why that highway and those shoulders have been kept that way, and the dirt pushed up in there and all of that. This would alleviate that problem, and I believe present a little bit safer options for people turning left. The purpose for my questioning and everything else is so that this is never, ever forgotten again in Woodland Park and the developers and the safety of our community. Although I don't agree with this, I will say there is some validity in doing this. I appreciate the calmness you handed this, and the way you handed this, and your explanation. I'm sorry you've been put in this spot. I look back at other administrations and other councils and the long-term strategical plans that we pay a lot of money for. This most definitely should be in your strategical plan and should never, ever be forgotten again and allowed to carry on. And I don't have great success, or, or believe you will have great success with CDOT stepping up to the table and improving this highway in an appropriate amount of time outside of the 1.4 million that they appropriated for 2024 for Phase 1 of 67, which is not enough to cover that. We put in for much more money than that, and I am disappointed with that because that has been a shovel-ready project for many years and should continue to be on our long-term plan, as well as a reliever route around Woodland Park and everything else, and looking at logistics. And that was my main question last night with the candidates for council coming here. It was about transportation and looking at it and trying to focus attention to, for the safety and welfare of our pedestrians and people traveling through here. That was my purpose for answering, asking these pointed questions, and I hope it's not forgotten in the future, and it does go into our long-term plan, and it does help the people.
Phil, last comment.
Last comment. So just, just a reminder that this is just an agreement between the city and the developer for monies to help develop that. We have a preliminary design, but we don't have a final design. So everything you've heard here is designing it and building it, but that's, we haven't come to any final agreement on that. All we're doing tonight here for this is to say, okay, the developer is going to put in $93,000 to help out. But what Paul's talking about is, yes, a concern. We do, I live there, so you already know that, so Paul and I live by each other, so I turn there a lot, and it is. I mean, I have to take some hard turns because I have people right on my behind, so, but this is about if the developer is going to spend a lot of money to help out. That's all this is. But the initial design, as, we only have an initial design. We don't have all the real details that Paul is talking about. And I also like to say that council has had this information for a long time.
No. No, it hasn't.
Well, I would say we've had it for at least two weeks.
Oh, thank you.
Well, that, yeah, I know. Paul and I sat in the same meeting discussing all of the, all of this information, and we looked at the pros and cons of this happening, and, you know, the, the worst case, there's so many different scenarios. If the Village of Tamarack doesn't come in, and we don't do this, something will eventually come in in the future, and then we, we're going to all be sitting here again. So, and it's going to cost probably twice as much. So that's, that's where it's hard for me to make the decision. Everybody wants us to save money and be good stewards of the finances of this community, and yet we are, we all of a sudden had this thrown in our lap. The question is, should we hold off on repaving of Rampart or Kelly and put it off one year and then get this turn lane in, and then be safe like Paul wants? Or do we? I, I don't know. I mean, what do we do? That's a tough one.
We'll call for the question.
We'll call for the question, but...
I need a motion to approve Resolution Number...
I'll move to approve Resolution 850, based on my comments earlier.
Second.
Two seconds. Yep?
Levy?
Yes.
Nakarado?
Yes.
Sonier?
I'm going to vote yes, because I think it will improve safety.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 4-0.
Yes.
About 5 and 10.
5-0. I'm... I'm sorry, Kelly.
It's okay, Suzanne.
Okay, thank you very much. We're gonna move on to, we have two ordinances on initial posting, then we're gonna take a short, short break, and then we'll move to public hearings and Agenda Item Number 9. So, okay, we're gonna grab Hillary real quick, and if anybody would like to leave now, that's great, but we're gonna take a break in about five minutes.
We taking a break? Now we taking a break?
No, we're gonna wait until we do the ordinances on initial posting, because it won't take long.
Nah, I'm with you, Paul. I mean, let's get...
Yeah.
Please. Okay. We're on Agenda Item Number 8A, and Sally.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance 1355 is a legislative item amending the Woodland Park Municipal Code, section specifically 1806.432, which is the definition of a setback. And then, secondly, 18.13.040C, dealing with the urban residential side setbacks. The overall goal of this ordinance is to allow for penetration on the sides of a home on narrow lots into the eight-foot setback by two feet. The Board of Adjustment has seen quite a few variance requests. This is pretty typical in most communities. You measure the setback from the foundation. Our code measures it from the penetration of the eaves. So, we're looking, this has been through the Planning Commission, public hearing, and the Planning Commission recommends approval. This is on first reading and holding the public hearing at the next meeting.
Thank you, Sally. Counsel, we're on initial posting. If you have questions for Sally, if not, I'll entertain a motion to consider the first reading of Ordinance 1355 on initial posting.
I'll move to approve Ordinance 1355 on initial posting inside the public hearing for November 21st, 2019.
Have a second?
Second.
Well, thank you. Suzanne?
Thank you. Levy?
Yes.
Nakarado?
Yes.
Swaye?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 6-0.
Right on the number that time.
I'm sorry.
You're great. I know you're not feeling well. We appreciate it. All right, Sally, we'll move forward.
Sure. Ordinance 1356 is basically a housekeeping ordinance, dealing with Chapter 18.51, which is the Board of Adjustment's chapter, and 18.60, which deals with variances. This is to remove some obsolete language in this area, so it is really just to clean up this section. And again, it has been reviewed by the Planning Commission, who recommends approval of this ordinance as well.
Thank you. Same thing, counsel. Any questions? Not, we'll entertain a motion to consider Ordinance 1356 on initial posting.
Motion to consider Ordinance 1356 as posted.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Suzanne?
Nakarado?
Yes.
Swaye?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sally. It's almost 9:15. We have a lot to do, so let's take 10-minute break, and we'll start again promptly at 9:25. Okay, thank you, folks. We're gonna move on to public hearings and Agenda Item Number 9A. Jason? And Sally?
All right.
Yes.
I, I don't, you can recuse yourself. It's, I think that this is the applicant and wanted to address counsel before we get started on this agenda item. And ultimately, the applicant has the right to do what they're planning on, as I understand it. So, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Excuse me before you start, Mark. Is Hillary good?
Well, it's my understanding that the applicant, having resolved Resolution 850, is planning on withdrawing their application for an appeal. So, this agenda item is gonna be moot in about two minutes. So, if you wanna step out, you may.
Or you can stay.
But ultimately, they have the right as the appellant to remove their application at any time.
So, there's no vote?
Correct. Counsel, can't force somebody to continue their appeal.
Okay, to approach.
It is great.
Good evening, everyone. Hello. Mark Weaver, 312 Aprilson Court, Woodland Park, Colorado. I'm part of the group M3XP2 that has the project slated, Village at Tamarack, and I'm wanting to withdraw this appeal, APL 19-003. On behalf of the partners.
Thank you. Jason?
So, again, that's, they're right as the applicant. There's not any further motions or anything required by counsel.
Any need for public comment?
At this point, it's a non-issue that appeal is removed and it's no longer active. If, I guess if the council would like to hear comments, you can. It wouldn't affect the appeal though, because the appeal is no longer active.
Thank you for withdrawing the appeal, Mark. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you, counsel.
You bet. We'll move on to Agenda Item 9B. And Jason?
Looks like I'm muted too fast. All right, so this is the ordinance concerning changing our municipal code. Counsel may or may not be aware, the state statutes have changed a little bit over the last several years on these particular issues. What this ordinance intends to do is make sure that our municipal code is in line with the state statutes, so that we can hold people accountable in municipal court. Right now, as it is today, persons between the ages over 18 years old and under 21 years old can possess marijuana. It's still against the law, state statute-wise, but under our ordinances, there's a gap. And so, this, part of what this intends to do is close that gap, make it mirror state statutes, so that we're able to handle those cases in municipal court, along with adding some additional definitions and things. But that's what's intended by this ordinance.
Counsel, we chatted about this earlier. Do you have any other questions? We're just making youngsters responsible between the ages of 18 and 21 where... where right now, it's only, they're only responsible up to the age of eighteen. So, we're increasing that number by three years, and that's what this ordinance is all about. And if you have no questions, we'll call for a motion to approve ordinance 1357. I don't have anybody signed up on nine B. If anyone would like to speak at this time, they certainly may.
Can you turn up your mic, please?
I'd be glad to. Sorry, it's because I'm not speaking into it. Is that better? If it's not, let me know. Thank you very much. Counsel? Motion to approve 1357? Okay, I made the motion. Good. I didn't know.
You didn't even know.
I didn't know, but now I do. And we have a second from, from Paul, so we will move forward. Suzanne?
Sounier?
Yeah.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
LeBar?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Nakarado?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries six zero.
Okay, Jase?
All right, and I failed to mention this on the last agenda item, but it also applies to this one. Thanks to the Police Department Municipal Court, they brought these to my attention as being issues, and so, I didn't want to forget that they were a part of this process. This ordinance deals with theft in the municipal code. What happened briefly is the state statutes changed to what's considered a felony, and they increased the minimum requirement or the maximum you could steal before it's considered a felony, depending on how you look at it. This ordinance intends to make sure that our court continues to have concurrent jurisdiction over those misdemeanors by increasing the total amount of theft that can occur, and we can still hold jurisdiction as a municipal court. It also adds some other definitions of types or ways that people tend to steal, price switching, and theft by lessee. So, that's what this ordinance is intended to do, is to make sure that we have jurisdiction in our municipal court to handle these issues.
You good with this, chief? Perfect. So, we are in public hearings. Would anybody like to speak on nine C? Counsel? Anybody else? The public hearing will be closed in that regard. Any questions or comments, counsel? And if not, we'll just call for a motion to approve ordinance 1358.
Move to approve motion 1358.
Second. Second from Mr. Sawyer and Suzanne.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
LeBar?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Nakarado?
Yes.
Sounier? Thank you. Motion carries six zero.
Thank you, Suzanne. Okay, we're in new business, and we will start with 10A and Kip Lyth.
Thank you. In front of you is Resolution 847. That's transferring a hundred single-family residential water taps to the multifamily water tap bank. The city's water tap management plan provided a mechanism by which the city controls water tap sales to be compatible with the city's water supply. That plan requires an annual allotment of single-family taps, and then it also does monitor and track multifamily taps. Staff recommends a transfer of a hundred single-family taps to the multifamily bank, which currently has forty-three taps in it right now, making that total a hundred and forty-three. At the beginning of 2019, there were six hundred and ninety taps available, so therefore, that number would drop by a hundred to five hundred and ninety taps. Then you still have the additional taps that are being sold this year. To date, we are at twenty-one single-family taps. So, there is a total of six hundred and, see my numbers here, six hundred and sixty-nine. So, that number would be reduced to five hundred and sixty-nine, if you look at it that way, total taps available.
That number, that number never increases, does it?
It will increase as we develop more water. Yes.
With the water we have, it won't increase.
Yes, so with the water we have currently, that's how many taps we can provide water to. As we develop and grow towards the north, we plan on developing additional water to the north, which would increase the available, or increase the total amount of taps available.
Great. Thank you, counsel. Questions for Kip before we go to public comment? None. A few people signed up for 10A. And I'll call by name. I don't know if they're here or they just want to talk at this time. F. Maria Sanelle. Kim Urban.
Kim Urban, 1250 Woodland Valley Ranch Drive, 505 Dallas Alley. Are we removing the taps?
For the potential of 10B and to allow future multifamily development to occur within the city.
Is there a difference in real estate taxes that are collected between a multifamily and a single-family?
I'm not an expert in real estate taxes.
That goes to the revenue that is generated for the city and the county, and so, I'm questioning why we would want to move taps from a single-family over to the multifamily. The other question that I have, if they are used for item B, are each of those units taxed individually, and will they pay real estate taxes? Or is that, is one development, and only the owner of that development pays real estate tax?
The, the reason to move taps, from a water standpoint, is to account for all the water being used. So, the city monitors its residential water usage. Commercial, we say our residential, our residential customers control our commercial development, right? So, we, we plan for commercial growth, and then the residential controls that growth. So, the, the reason to move taps from a single-family bank to a multifamily bank is just to make sure that every residential unit, we're tracking water.
And I don't know if your question is, what is the cost? I don't know that we tax these, but people who hook up to our system are required to pay a fee for the water tap. And there's, I believe, I know Kip's, I don't want to say something without Kip understanding what I'm talking, I believe the multi-tap fee is different than the residential single fee.
So, we have two types of multifamily taps. We have a multifamily commercial tap, and then I will call it a multifamily residential tap. A multifamily commercial tap would consist of an apartment, to where you have X amount of units and their rentals. A multifamily residential fee would be someone similar to a townhouse, a condominium, where you have larger projects that are being built, and they need a bigger number of taps available at that time. Because our tap management plan restricts how we sell our taps, so a single, developer can't come in and buy a lot of single-family residential taps. They're limited to two a month. In multifamily projects, you can imagine that you're building multiple townhouses all at once, to where you couldn't purchase two taps, to where it has to be a larger number. So, that's why counsel has the authority to approve taps on a project-by-project basis.
Yes, and I understand about the tap fee, but what I'm looking at is, we're moving single-family homes, which, you know, average cost in Woodland Park is, I know we have some realtors here, it's above three hundred thousand now, right? So, the real estate taxes on a three hundred thousand dollar home is going to be very different than the real estate tax on a manufactured home that has small square footage. And so, we're actually impacting the tax revenue base that's coming in, even though you're going to have a lot of units that are using city facilities and county facilities. So, I question why we would want to make that decision to move those taps over and lose that amount of revenue with the growth and the stream that we have on city and county services.
So, the, a single-family house could be the same size as a multifamily house. It could be. So, a townhouse could be just as large as a single-family house. So, from a tap perspective, we're not looking at the real estate tax on a residential house from a, from the water standpoint. So, if, just simply transferring taps from a single-family bank to the multifamily bank, you could have a multifamily house, a townhome, that's bigger than a single-family house and have more tax, a bigger tax base.
You could, but we're not moving the taps to account for a condo or a large townhome. We're moving taps because they're enough to give for development that is going to have a much lower tax base for the county and the city. So, and the other thing that I did want to mention is, Jason, I remembered my senior amendment. You made the statement that the developer would only have to pay the twenty-six thousand dollars and some change, according to current code. So, it looks, again, like our code is sorely out of date, and we keep finding this out through the loopholes that some of our developers are using. And so, how are we going to tighten the net on that? And I had inquired previously about the nuisance code, because currently, we don't have a nuisance code, and so, when people don't take care of their properties, and they're not taking care of the people that are running from them, the city can't do that. And so, my understanding is that a nuisance code is being written, and I would like an update on that as well, please.
And we can, but we need to keep on subject, Ms. Urban, so go ahead and have a seat, and we'll answer your question.
Thank you. I'm sure my three minutes is up.
So, very briefly, because we want to make sure we stay on topic. But to your point, it's my understanding, Sally, that the traffic impact fees were designed and developed to leverage state and federal grant funding that no longer seems to exist. As far as what are we going to do about revising the code? We do have slated for next year and anticipate receiving a grant to do a comprehensive plan. And part of that will to go through and update our comprehensive plan that's over ten years old, to make sure that we understand the vision of the community. And a part of that is to go through and redo the entire zoning code to bring it up to date. So, we are working on that. We are also working on several ordinances and changes with the Planning Commission, depending on how that looks, to address the most current issue that everybody's here about. And then, to your point, as far as the nuisance code, it, it requires a lot of time and energy, and I'm doing my best to handle that and all of these other issues that we're dealing with as a city. But we are working on all of those things to get moving forward.
And I'll just add to that, as you well know, we have had some issues with the code, clearly, and everyone's very well aware of that, no more than our planning director. And so, we are examining the code, and if you're aware, or even if you're not, developers typically move faster than municipal government. And municipal government ends up usually being reactive to things that happen in the market, unfortunately. That's the way it is. The good news is, we recognize that fact, and we're doing everything we can to get better in that regard. And so, we're working hard in, in that regard, and we will continue to do so. So, appreciate you bringing that up, just making it clear that that's one of our priorities, and we're working hard to achieve that. Thanks for bringing that up. Noel?
So, Kip, if I understood the question, is there a cost difference, difference to the developer if it is multifamily or single-family? That was the question that I heard. That was one of them, and then there was obviously a property tax question, but...
So, to, I'll try to, we like to micromanage our taps, which is a good thing. For an apartment complex, a multifamily apartment complex typically pays less per unit for water and sewer tap fees. A, a multifamily project that's single ownership pays the same as a single-family tap. So, if a house was to come in and be built, a single-family house, just in a subdivision, they're, they're subject to our residential tap fees, which there's three, three tiers for, based on the water fixture units in, in that house. The same fees apply to a multifamily house, single ownership, townhouse, condominium, and so on and so forth. It's the same tap fee as a single family.
So, my understanding is regardless whether it's a multifamily or single-family, they're still going to pay the same, based on the...
If it's single ownership, they pay the same fee. If it's a rental, then they have a different fee that's based off of water fixture units just in the unit itself. And it's typically cheaper if you were apartment complex. We pay less per door than a single-family or a multifamily residential. And I hope I'm making sense.
Well, so, what I'm hearing is that it's, we're, we're taking good taps that we could get more money for and moving them into a place where we get less money.
No, we're not doing that at all.
The opposite.
Other way around.
We're, we're moving taps into a bank where we would get...
It would cost more or less?
We're, it all depends on, on the use.
Right.
Okay? So, we're moving single-family residential taps into a multifamily residential bank.
Would we be losing money?
There's two types of multifamily, though. There's apartments, and then there's residential or single-ownership units. So, it all depends on how they're used, as how the fees are being applied.
Okay. I'm not sure that answers the question, but I guess we would need an example of, a better example.
I'm gonna throw you a thought, Noel.
I hope my mic's on. Can you explain the construction? The difference between the pipe diameters, from where we're feeding? Maybe I'm off balance here.
Well, I'm just asking.
I'm, I'm off balance.
Thank you.
I understand.
Thank you.
That's not an appropriate question. I would draw my question.
We'll go back to public comment, and we'll come back to counsel. Anybody else like to speak on item number 10A? Excuse me, sir. Excuse me. I'll call on you. You'll be next. Yes, sir.
Jim Urban, 1250 Woodland Valley Ranch Drive and 505 Dallas Alley. Husband of Kim. I didn't understand that. So, can you give me numbers of, for a manufactured home, what do you pay for a tap fee?
Is it a rental? Is it like a rental?
Yeah, so the ground's rented. It's a simple question.
It's not. It's not that simple.
Let's say it's around five hundred square feet.
Doesn't matter, square footage.
Okay.
So, a single ownership structure...
What is that? What is that definition?
That's a single-family house, a condo, a townhouse, a, just a...
So, they own the property?
They own the house.
That I'm not interested in. If I rent the property and I set a mobile home on it, what do I pay?
Then, you would fall into a multifamily commercial tap fee, and your fees are a lot less.
A lot less. So, we are moving, we're losing revenue here as a city by doing this.
Incorrect. So, this...
You're doing this for the fifty-three units that are going to be built out there. It's why you're moving this. You said that earlier, because you wanted to talk about 10B, right?
Mr. Urban? You asked a question. Would you give him a chance to answer it?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you repeat your question, please?
The reason you said you were moving this was the discussion about 10B. You were moving these taps across, right?
We could, we could allocate forty-three taps that are in the bank right now. Okay? 10B, yes, there was a fifty-three tap request.
Right.
Right? However, if someone within the city limits wants to build a, a townhouse project, a condominium project, an apartment project, there needs to be taps available for those projects.
And you could address that at that time, when that, when that happens?
You, you can do it at any time, yes.
Yeah, but we're doing it now.
Right.
Why, why is that?
To make it available for development within the city of Woodland Park. We're tracking unit for unit here. Okay? It's a dwelling unit for a dwelling unit. Single-family going to multifamily is tracked from the number of taps the same way. I think what you're, you're, what you're getting to is the fees, so...
Yeah, just the numbers.
The fees, the fees for this project are the same fees for any residential project in town, except if it were truly an apartment project, the fees would be less.
So, for a single-family home, a standalone single-family home, a typical home, what is a tap fee?
Fifteen thousand, eight hundred and some change.
For a manufactured home, on land that the person doesn't own, how much is that tap?
Fifteen thousand, eight hundred and some dollars.
So, it is exactly... So it is exactly the same?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. That's the only question I have.
It's confusing. I understand.
It is. And the real estate taxes, is that, who speaks to that? These people pay the same kind of taxes I have to pay, right?
We're going to keep this on the water taps right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
And if I could add, the reason you want to make sure those are available, and take 10B aside, the reason you want to make sure you have multifamily taps available is so that if and when a developer comes through to build an apartment complex or some very gorgeous townhomes that are right next to the golf course, as an example, is to make it so that that process isn't further delayed by additional steps of going through this entire process, to have those available for when a development does happen. So you're right, it could be held off, but if there's a development that comes two months from now, that's $600,000 townhomes, we're going to have to delay that entire project while we go through this process then.
Yeah. But there's 43 available now, right?
Correct.
So that could be addressed currently?
Well, we have a request for, to use those that we're going to be addressing next. And then we would have zero.
All right.
This would set up the community to allow additional growth.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, yes, sir.
I will wait until B.
You'll wait until B, okay. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Anyone else on 10A? And we'll close public comment on 10A and come back to council. Kelly?
I would just like to comment that the water tap management plan is less about managing revenue than it is about managing water resources. It's a very extensive process, and I know that Kip would be glad to spend the time to, with anyone individually, to go through that whole process and how that works. It is very time-consuming. It will take hours. But I know that after you spend the time with him to understand the water tap management plan in its entirety, I think you'll appreciate and better understand what he's trying to explain in a nutshell here this evening. And so I just wanted to add that because it's really not about managing revenue. It's used to manage our water resources. And there are types of taps. We allot and allocate each year taps for residential use. Then we use those for people that want to build a single-family residence, whether it's a manufactured home, whether it's stick-built. And then if there are demands for multifamily, commercial, or residential, then we put some of that water in a bank to draw from for those uses. It could even be a commercial, a business tap. So it's more about the management of our resources than it is about the management of our revenue. And those single-family residences, and I'm, I know I'm outside of my, but I'm just trying to be a layperson to see if it's helpful. There are three tiers as to what those cost, and they increase by the amount of fixture units in the home, which is directly relevant to the size of the home, the number of bathrooms, et cetera. And so the price increases with the increase in the size of the home and the consumption potential of the home. So if that helps, maybe, I don't know, just...
Thank you.
...a different perspective from a layperson.
Thank you. Council, anybody else? Yes, sir.
I'd like to finish what Councilwoman Casey just said. Is your microphone on, please? It's supposed to be.
All right, we'll help you.
Just leave it on.
I probably just turned it off instead of on. Sorry. To get to the, I'm a finance guy. Is the bottom line, is it advantageous for the city to sell water taps?
Yes.
So if it's advantageous for the city to sell water taps, that means we should have water taps available to sell, right? I'm just trying to get it to the lowest common denominator here. And yes, and I agree with Councilwoman Case that it's really, that's not the high priority here. The priority is managing the water resource. But it's still financially logical as well. I mean, am I looking at this? Thank you.
Anybody else on 10A? Okay, if not, we'll call for a motion to consider Resolution 847.
I will move to approve Resolution 847 as presented.
Have a second? Second. Suzanne?
Case? Yes. Levy?
Yes.
Nakarado?
Yes.
Soynier?
Oh, jeez. What am I going to say but yes?
Sawyer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, thanks. Kip, we'll go on to 10B.
All right, I'll try to be a little bit clearer. I'll do my best. Resolution 848 is allocating 53 multifamily dwelling unit water taps. The developer of Lot 5, Tamarack Tech Park, Piling 5, has requested 53 water taps for the proposed project. On 6.68 acres, proposing 53 single-family units, however, it's a multifamily project. So these are multifamily taps for the purpose of a single-family unit. I hope that helps clarify, because we can, the water tap management plan only allows two taps per month by a developer. When you have a multifamily project, as I explained earlier, you need more taps for that project. Conditions of approval for the 53 taps are pursuant to Section 13.27.050D. The multifamily projects are allocated by City Council on a project-by-project basis. The applicant shall pay $200 per tap as a reservation fee that's due upon City Council approval. Resolution number 380, that was adopted in 1997, establishes a list of criteria that the project needs to meet. This project meets 11, or nine of the 11 criteria. As we talked earlier, the city's water tap management plan, managing the water, not the fiscal portion, just managing drop for drop, basically spells it out for council with those criteria and meeting those. Currently, multifamily units consist of 10% of all the dwelling units within the city. So there are 10%, of our housing is multifamily. Resolution 847, that was just approved, moved 100 of the taps from the single-family bank to the multifamily bank for a total of 143. If this resolution is approved, that uses 37% of the multifamily bank, so allowing for 63% to remain for additional projects. Staff recommends approval of 848, Resolution 848, allowing 53 multifamily taps to be allocated for this project.
Thank you, sir. Council? Noel?
Kip, thank you. Can you go through all of those 11 requirements, please?
Absolutely. Criteria one, taps are currently available provided by the tap management plan, yes. Can the community economically provide...
Excuse me, Kip.
Sorry. Can the community economically provide water and wastewater treatment capacity? Yes. The project design furnishes efficient access for fire, police, and emergency services? Yes. The project adequately addresses and mitigates on- and off-site transportation circulation impacts? No. The proposal is compatible with surrounding land use and mitigates potential negative impacts on adjoining uses? Yes.
And Kip, if you could back up to the transportation one, because I think that's, now has been resolved by tonight's actions with C.D.O. and the Resolution 850.
Right. You are correct. So when I submitted my, for the packet, that had not been approved yet. So that...
Four is yes?
So four would be yes. That's correct. Thank you.
Can you reread it for us, please?
The project adequately addresses and mitigates on- and off-site transportation and circulation Moving to number six, the proposal addresses affordable housing needs? Yes. The proposal includes services and facilities for senior and community and the handicapped? Yes. The project provides, for the protection and preservation of natural resources? No. The project does not detrimentally impact significant cultural or historic features? Yes. The project is aesthetically inviting, pedestrian-friendly? Yes. The project design is consistent with local mountain character of a small town? Yes. The project designs conforms to the Parks Trails and Open Space Master Plan? Yes.
Can you elaborate on the one no a little bit, please?
Protection and preservation of natural resources?
Is that because they're not using solar, or, I mean, what? I guess I don't understand that question.
That's because to build this project, you will probably have to clearcut the site.
The trees.
Yes.
Any other questions for Kip from council before we go to public comment?
How do I protect your rights, the city's rights, to collect on water? If there's a foreclosure, I'm sorry, if there's a foreclosure involved in this project? In other words, I have personal property, which these are actually homes that could be moved if someone is so inclined to do. I have personal property on real property. We're in a gray area here. Please explain to me how you're protected or how you will secure the city's rights to be able to collect on any default on the water, water bills or utility bills?
Do you want to do that, or? So to your point, I think there's, first, we need to address when you say that these can be moved, that's true of any structure. Any structure could be moved. But these are not designed to be moved. They're permanently attached to the foundation. We've checked with the Teller County Assessor's Office and ensured that if and when there needs to be liens placed against these properties for non-payment of water tap or water use, that we can lien these properties, just like we do any other property in the city of Woodland Park, and that those then become a super-priority lien collected, much like taxes are, and those are collected every single year, or the property goes into tax lien sales.
And how do you fight those gentlemen over there if property goes into default and supposedly Teller County says they could put it up for taxes? I'm a little confused about not owning the land underneath, renting that land on a 30-year lease, and having a home on it, which would be considered private property because they don't own the land. But once you attach it to a permanent foundation, it becomes part of real property. Wow. That's something. It is a bundle of laws that come into play that are not in play if the person actually owns the piece of land that the home is sitting on instead of leasing this piece of land under a 30-year contract.
So from the city's perspective, to protect our interests, we've assured that we can lien these structures to ensure that we get collection of the water usage.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else, council, before we go to public comment? Okay, we are on open public comment on 10B. I've got a few people signed up. Actually, I'm going to just go by show of hands, because most of these people have spoken. It doesn't preclude you from speaking again. So if you'd like to speak on 10B, who would like to start? I think Murph got first hand up and go there. Please be sure that we're speaking specifically to the 53 water taps. This has nothing to do with the development. This is about the 53 water taps.
Ensuring that you can lien the property. I sold a trailer house down here in, the Yee Chief Trailer Park, a number of years ago. And I've gotten a tax bill for that repeatedly and repeatedly. And nobody's ever bought the tax lien on it. Because nobody wants to. You really want the structure? What are you going to do with the structure if you don't own the property? And how do you effectively lien that for collection of the water? Do you go and take the house down now? Because without the property under it, it's worth the wood that it's built with. And also, how much did you say the multifamily taps are?
Which type?
Multifamily taps. Multifamily.
Commercial, residential?
Well, I don't know. Do you classify this as commercial or do you classify this as residential? Because, well, you've still written the land, which is commercial, but you're, somebody else is owning the property on top of it. So what does it really fall into, Kip?
Classifying it as residential.
Okay, so you're going to classify it, classify it as residential. Okay. But still, I see a huge problem with it because, you know, if I'm going out and I, in fact, the cities generally sell these liens, do they not? Do they not sell these at auction? If you have tax liens? I mean, the county does.
County.
Okay. Nobody's going to buy these liens.
Oh, there'll be people to buy the liens.
Okay. But like I said, I keep you on the tax bill. Nobody's bought the lien. Nobody's possessed the trailer that I sold, and I see it, you know? I see it.
You got people that, back there, that'll buy that lien in a heartbeat.
And I'd say congratulations to you, but these are not trailers. These are not mobile homes. These are manufactured.
It's still the same, it's still the same issue. You've got a pile of wood sitting on a foundation with dirt on it below that that belongs to somebody else. And I, like I said, you know, nobody ever bought the tax lien on that trailer down there. Yeah, I still get a bill for it every year, even though I sold it like 15 years ago. So somebody would have possessed that lien a long time ago if it was worth it.
Thank you. Who would like to go next? 10B, yes, sir. I'm sorry. Yes, sir. Okay. I'll just call you by your name, Mr. Fury. Go right ahead.
Okay. Joe Fury, 565 Pembroke. Well, this is kind of amazing. I'm a little confused because I'm going to get to the water taps, but, you know, for the water tap purposes, this project is multifamily. But for the modular home purposes, it's single-family. So it keeps changing. I disagree with the yes-no's on the multifamily criteria for tap allocation. Item three, the project design furnishes efficient access for police, fire, and emergency services. There's only one entrance. Units catch fire. You've now got 53 families plus trying to leave in cars through one entrance, the same entrance that fire engines and police are trying to get in. Item five, the proposal is compatible with surrounding land uses and mitigates potential negative impacts on adjoining uses. City says yes, I say no. The proposal is not compatible. Otherwise, why is a fence required to hide it? Item six, the proposal addresses affordable housing needs. That's funny. $700 to rent the land at least, as stated by the developer, plus a loan for the structure, you're looking at... you're looking at in the low 2,000s for a monthly payment. That is not affordable. Item 10, the project is aesthetically inviting. Again, if it is, why does it need to be hidden by a fence? Because it looks exactly like a trailer park. The project design is consistent with local mountain character and small-town environment. City says yes, I say no. If you ask anybody in this audience other than developers, you'll get a no. The city council, the municipal code requires a vote on water tap allocations for every project. So city council, our elected representatives, here's your chance to stop this project. And please listen carefully. If a judge or a juror in a court case stated, "I'm a, that defendant is a neighbor of mine, and we have a great relationship," they would not be allowed to sit on that case. Mayor Levy, on May 16th, at the city council meeting, you stated, and this is on, and this was recorded on record, that, and this is regarding Pete Labarre, you were discussing his U-Haul proposal. Mayor Levy stated, quote, "Pete's been next to me for 10 years now. He maintains the property. We have a great relationship." Mayor Levy, you have a conflict of interest, and you must recuse yourself from any votes related to the development, the village at Tamarack. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? This young man stood up before you, Ms. Urban, and we'll have you go next. He's been waiting patiently.
Thank you. My name is Scott Lauderd. I live at 445 Oxford Lane. Bear with me. Ms. Riley has approved the village at Tamarack to be single-family dwelling. Now, tonight, the city has transferred single-family water taps to multifamily designations. And then, this proposal requests to transfer multifamily water taps to the village at Tamarack, which has been approved by the city as single-family, single-family dwellings. Ms. Riley has explained to me tonight that the village at Tamarack is a hybrid project. Hybrid project. What's a hybrid project? Ms. Riley actually used MFS, Multifamily Suburban, in her slide presentation tonight to refer to the village at Tamarack. Apparently, hybrid project. Single family for approval, now multifamily. I would suggest that most of us citizens of Woodland Park cannot grasp the city's hybrid project definition of this designation of multifamily to single-family, back again to multifamily for the water tap transfers. I respectfully request the council reject Resolution 849 and send the proposal of the village at Tamarack back to the, or not back to the planning commission, to the planning commission, where it should have been directed by the city at the outset of this project. Thank you.
I don't want to correct you, but it's 848, just so you know.
Yep.
Is it? No, it's the one I'm typing.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Ms. Urban?
Kim Urban, 1250 Woodland Valley Ranch Drive, 505 Allen's Alley. I would like to reiterate what Joe Fury said as far as meeting the requirements for fire access. I don't know if any of you have watched the special on the Fire in Paradise, California. Did you know that 85% of the fatalities occurred in their manufactured home, mobile home parks, specifically for the reasons that Joe stated, limited egress? I know the fire department does a review, and that they have given approval. It's not just the Paradise fire. The majority of forest fires in the U.S., the majority of fatalities, occur in manufactured home neighborhoods. So I would say that that is a no. I also agree with him that item number six, affordability of the housing, Habitat for Humanity is against this development. They do not consider it affordable housing. I'm disappointed that the head of Habitat for Humanity is not here, or maybe they are and they just haven't spoken. If you do the numbers, this comes out to about $400 a square foot for these tiny homes. That's the high end of a custom home now. So I think we have to change that to a no. The other thing is about the clearcutting. So we're clearcutting to put this development in, and on the plans, it shows just saplings put in. The amount of noise pollution that you get back behind Research Drive now from where my mom moved in 23 years ago is phenomenal. I used to not be able to hear Highway 67. I hear Highway 67 very clearly, even when there's only a few cars going. So the clearcutting is also an issue. And so I'm going to stick to it and respectfully ask, as the other gentleman did, the council votes no on giving these tap, these taps over. This clearly fails lower the criteria than what's being presented. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, anybody else on 10B? If not, public hearing is closed. We'll come back to council. Anything else, council, before we call for the question? If not, we'll call for the question.
Yeah, I'd like to, let's just clarify because, Jason, what are the, can this issue go back to planning?
So the way that this is presented, it's not in the code at the current time, that this could go to planning. It couldn't go there in the first place. It can't go there now. There's nothing in the code that provides for that.
What are the consequences of voting this down?
There could be legal liability to the city. I don't want to go into the detail. But that's the realities.
We'll call for the question.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment?
May.
I just would like to bring to the attention, we are the water provider in our jurisdiction, and we are the only water provider in our jurisdiction. And by law, which we are bound to as a council, we are bound to make decisions within the law, and the law prevails. And within the law, as a water provider, there's no basis for us or with which to reject someone's water service. If there was, then there might be an opportunity for us to consider a rejection of an application for water taps. So I hear what you're saying, and unfortunately, we don't have the luxury of breaking the law or not operating within the law. And so with that being said, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 849. I mean, 848. Sorry, I can't keep the numbers straight either.
You have a second.
I'll say.
Thank you.
Suzanne, we have a motion and a second to approve 848.
Thank you. Case?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Necorado?
Yes.
Soier?
No.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Motion carries five, excuse me, four zero, four one. Sorry.
Yeah, four to one.
You going to grab Hillary?
While we're waiting, I'd just like to make one more comment. There's an election in April, and I would invite each and every one of you to try on the council seat. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We will move on to reports. And mayor's report, I've got a number of announcements. I'll wait for about a minute. Okay. We'll start with Veterans Day and the Veterans Day celebrations. There's three significant events that day I think that everybody should be aware of. First and foremost, well, not first and foremost, first, at 7:00 at Lyons Park, along with the veterans, VFW, American Legion, we will be putting out the flags as we do every year. There'll be a short ceremony. Following that, at 9:30 at the high school, probably one of the best events that the high school does every year, and open to the public and certainly to any veterans. But the event at the high school, put on by the kids and some of the VFW and American Legion folks that were here tonight is just one of the greatest emotional, just a great opportunity to honor those that have fought for our country and that have allowed us to be here today. And so 9:30 at the high school, everybody's invited to that. And then, last but not least, and a great event, I know Paul and I are going to be there, but 5:00 PM Monday at the Youth Pass Cultural Center, there's a free barbecue for all veterans, active-duty military, National Guard, reservists, and families. It's sponsored by American Legion 1980, those folks that were here earlier today. And you just won't go to a greater event. It's just outstanding. So everyone's invited. We'd love to see you there, and it'd be well worth it for all of you. November 14th, 11:30 to 1, the Chamber Lunch and Learn on Alzheimer's Awareness, presented by Paul Levy from Daybreak and Adult Day Program. November 15th, from 4 to 8, Parents Night Out at the Aquatic Center. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
Excuse me, November 15th, 4 to 8, Parents Night Out at the Aquatic Center. $20 per child. Each additional child, $15, registered by November 13th. November 19th is the Chamber Business After Hours at the Community Banks of Colorado from 5:30 to 7:00. November 23rd, and Noel's got some good information on this. You do? From 12 to 2, come celebrate the new addition of the cog railroad car to Woodland Park at Woodland Station. Hot dogs, hot chocolate, and entertainment will be provided. Do you want to say anything to that now, Noel?
I want to hold off on that.
Okay. Tickets are now on sale for the city's New Year's Eve celebration at the Youth Pass Cultural Center. Please contact the cultural center if interested. That should be a great event. They're expecting a couple hundred folks. If you like to celebrate New Year's Eve, that would be a great place to do it. And that's all I have. Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just would like to comment to Mr. Councilmember Sawyer that he has taken the role as council liaison to the DDA, and I know that he's serving on some other boards. And if there are some one or so that you would like for me to take on for you to relieve some of that obligation, I'd be happy to do that. You think about that.
Oh, okay, well, let's, go ahead, and I'll bring that up in my...
And then the other thing that I'd like to talk about is the tree lighting. I just want to remind the community as often as possible that the tree lighting celebration after the parade, the Lighter Side of Christmas Parade on November 7th.
Excuse me?
December, like I said, December 7th, is moved this year from the cultural center to Memorial Park. And so if you'll make your way up Center Street to Memorial Park, you'll find a welcoming candy cane alley lit up to bring you into the park for the celebration. We'll have fires in the fireplace. We have wood being donated by Scott Donlin with Tip Top Tree Service, trying to recruit him to manage the fires as well. But it'll be a great celebration, and so we're looking forward to having outdoor Christmas, our community Christmas trees outdoors, and the lighting by our mayor that evening. That weekend is full of festivities with Kiwanis Breakfast with Santa, the Tweed's Holiday Home Tour. Tickets are on sale with a chance to win four tickets to the Denver Bronco game with the Raiders on December 29th, my birthday. And then... How old? There you go. That's it. How old do you think I am?
You're close to me.
Yeah, I'm 61. Anyway, and the parade and the tree lighting, and it's just a great tradition to kick off the holiday season, beginning December 7th.
Fireworks.
Fireworks after the parade, while you walk to the park for the tree lighting. Gosh, I guess that's all I'll say for now. Hillary, thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Hillary? Welcome back.
Thanks. I don't have anything for this evening other than welcome Darwin.
Thank you. And I certainly don't have anything for this evening.
Well, we all welcome you, Darwin.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome, Darwin.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank you, Neil, for mentioning the veterans. I appreciate all men and women who are active-duty, securing my freedom and the freedom of the people here. I also thank the veterans who have served and deeply appreciate it. And please join on November 11th at the Youth Pass Cultural Center at 5:00 PM, the barbecue and celebrating the American Legions and Veterans Day. I'm also, would like to say thank you to Ben. I deeply appreciate you as a person, as a city engineer, your guidance and direction on the projects that you've brought forward, your moving on into the public sector. I wish you the very best. I know you will be successful in whatever you do. And happy trails to you, buddy.
Thank you, Paul. That means a lot coming from you. Thank you.
I do actually have a lot to say, but I'm going to narrow it down based on time. I wish the community had not left so they can continue to hear what we say, or what I was about to say, is that, sitting up here, we have to look at everything. We can't look at issues emotionally. We have to look at the facts. We have to make our decisions based on the facts. And sometimes, that's very difficult when we have, you know, people that are emotionally involved in an issue. It's sometimes very hard to sit up here. I'm pretty sure I just upset half the community tonight. But, I mean, that's the challenge that we all have, sitting up here, and we understand that role. I am on for a board, an advisory, and a committee. So, in fact, it's kind of interesting you brought that up because Darwin and I talked today already, and I gave him the opportunity to think about it, historical preservation and park and rec advisory. I immediately resigned from both of those. So if I could pass the baton to another council member, the meetings are kind of right in the middle of my workday, so it's a little challenging. I'm sitting there in the committees and working at the same time. So I would hope the council would, or take that over. Can I do that, Suzanne? Can I resign right now and then ask for someone else to take over?
Sure, you could give it up. Darwin, you'd like to take one or both of those?
For sure, the historical preservation. I have, I think Sally knows, I have a history undergrad degree, so it's something here and dear to me anyway. and there to be anyway.
Well, that leaves park and rec.
I would be happy if you would like me to take over the park and rec advisory board. I'd be happy to do.
There you go. You know, I will give kudos.
When do they meet, Noel?
Next Wednesday at 6:00, I believe.
So, it's an evening thing?
Yeah, it's an evening thing.
Oh, that would be awesome.
Yeah. But I have to give you kudos, because you were so involved in the dog park, and that was a park and rec thing, so you fit perfectly.
Well, you know, dogs are my life, so, other than, I'm not the only one, but they're a pretty important part of my life, so. I would be happy to do that, if that's how the council would like, if that's what the council would like.
Thank you. Thank you, Dar. Thank you.
And historical preservation meets on Monday.
Is first Monday, 3:30. We just had it last Monday.
Councilmember Sawyer?
Yes.
Are you running on state on the USC?
I'm on the USC.
We didn't hear you mention it.
There you go. I don't, we haven't met in so long, I mean, I guess, yeah, I'll stay on that. I mean, I don't think we meet very often, so it's not like, it's not affecting my job.
Anything else, sir?
There is good news about the, I just found out right before council, but I want to hold off a little bit before I say anything. There's some great news about the railcar coming up here, and I think everybody on council will be pleased, everybody on the DDAs pleased, but I'm going to save the surprise for later. All right?
Thank you.
And I just want to say, council, good job for having a five-hour meeting yesterday, a almost five-hour meeting tonight, so it's been a long, been a long two days.
Thank you. Move on to city attorney's report.
I'll save my words and energy for the executive session.
Darren?
Two really quick things, and I want to say some, make a little bit, take some time to recognize Ben real quick. First of all, a lot of questions tonight from the audience that would be really beneficial. We're having a Citizens Academy again. Applications will be open in December, and it'll occur in January. Water rights, planning, you name it, all those discussions will occur there, and you can get all of your questions answered. Anybody interested in doing that, please apply. That'll be posted in December. The other thing, and I know the city attorney discussed, is that we will be reviewing our comprehensive plan in 2020, next year, and that's an opportunity for everybody to get involved and provide community input on all these issues that we heard tonight, so that we can have a, we can plan for the future of our community for the next 10 years, so those are major ones. So, let me talk about Ben. In October of last year, before I even got here, Suzanne and Kip and I had the opportunity to start recruiting and interviewing a new public works director. We intended to hire a public works director. We got some good applications, and we got one, John DeVoe, happened to be the person who pushed it on us. It was, we saw it, and we're like, hey, let's check this out. Ben comes in, he's one of our three applicants, and I'll tell you, we were, the three of us, when Ben walked out of that interview, the three of us looked at each other and said, yeah, that's the right, that's the right person, without a doubt. I remember looking at each other, and we were like, we've got to, we've got to bring Ben on. And I think city council, over the last 12 to 13 months, has realized what an incredible engineer, what incredible intelligent person Ben is, and what value he has brought to our community, to our city. And I think he's, I think Ben's a future city manager. I think he, I'm sorry he's going in the private sector, but I know, I bet he's going to get pulled back into the public sector, because I really think he is a future city manager. That doesn't mean anybody else isn't either, but I just see a lot of potential in Ben, and I'm really, I'll be honest with you, I'm really sorry to see him go, but he's going to be taking, taking some time to take his family out to Coeur d'Alene, and I think he's gonna, he's going to be a happy person, his family's going to be happy, and so, I just wish you the best, Ben. Thank you. Thank you for everything you've done for us. So.
And I would just like to add to that a little bit. You know what, I disagree with Darren. First and foremost, you know, you've done a great job with the city, and we all appreciate that, but for me, and for those that know you and your family, that's been, you know, that's been my, well, exactly how to say it, but that's been my greatest pleasure, getting to meet you and your family, and really kind of getting to know you. I think you've got an amazing future, and success is written all over your face in everything that you do. And in disagreement with Darren, I hope you make a lot of money and never see municipal government.
Absolutely. I'll second that.
Because you've got, you're a special guy, 30 years old. I mean, I couldn't find my butt when I was 30 years old. And you provide a great leadership, and we'll all agree, I mean, there's just not enough we can say, you will be missed. I will definitely agree with Darren in that regard, but good luck, love your family, and just great stuff ahead for you, so congratulations, and we will miss you for sure. And you're moving to one of the greatest towns in the world that I know. Coeur d'Alene, Idaho is just gorgeous, and you know, anything you want in your future, you're going to get it, so.
Absolutely.
Good luck to you.
Thank you, Neil.
Anything else, council?
Yes, stay away from municipal government.
I'd just like to say thank you, Ben, for being here.
Thank you.
You've, what you've accomplished in the last year is unbelievable with the 10-year plan. Just a little side note, if none of you knew, he's, almost was a professional rock climber.
Ooh.
Yeah, look at that.
That means he's really strong.
He is. He likes, he likes breakfast burritos.
Good luck.
He's a Pisces. No, I don't know what the...
Thanks very much. Any parting words, Ben?
Yeah, so, I will say that earning the respect of everybody up here in this community has, will go down as one of my lifetime achievements. You know, we're multi-generational natives here, and yeah, it's a, it's a hard thing to decide to pick up your family and move, but it's such a unique opportunity, and we're young, and we just kind of have to try it. But yeah, I can say, from seeing it from the inside perspective of what everybody goes through every single day, that the people that work here for the city have some incredible integrity. And I know in my dealings with council and with the staff here, that people, that you guys care far more than I think is surface level about this community and about doing what you feel like is right, and it's really impressive. And if there's anything I want out of government, I would say it's that, so, yeah, sorry. No, I really appreciate this opportunity and being part of this whole family, so thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council, I need a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make a motion to go in executive session.
Suzanne?
Oh. Been a lot of tears tonight. I did.
Motion made by Kelly and second by Noel. Yes.
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 Thank you.
Thank you all for being here.